Okay, pro thing and you gotta read it all the way across.
I'll read it all the way across.
Call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors of May 4th, 2015, meeting to order. We're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Eagle Scout Junior Cadet Troop 637. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, I'll have the invocation. Okay, Lord, please be with us as we seek to do the people's business. Give us the wisdom to listen openly and do the people's business to the best of our ability. Amen. Do we have any requests to postpone agenda items, add, delete, or change the order presentation?
Move to approve as presented by the county administrator.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we have our certificates of appreciation, special resolution, proclamation, and presentation. First, I'm gonna let Mr. Tucker take 6A.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, as you know, I'm the chairman of the Community Action Board at the Deep Metal Correctional Center. And recently, there was an organizational change and a personnel change there. Warden Jeffrey Dillman is with us tonight. He made a presentation to the Community Advisory Board a month ago, and I was so impressed by his approach to not only corrections but cooperation with the community that we've invited him to come with us tonight. He's on 24/7, so he's gonna have to leave immediately after his presentation. The purpose of this presentation is to put a face on the warden, so we know who you are, to let him introduce himself and his philosophy of corrections and his approach to community involvement and cooperation. And finally, the organizational changes that the Department of Corrections has gone through in the course of the last few months and how they affect Goochlin and Powhatan County. Warden Dillman, please.
Thank you, Chairman, rest of the board. I appreciate you inviting me to kinda, kinda brief you on what has happened out at the State Farm property over the last year. I'll kinda start with that. Many people, you know, heard that Powhatan Correctional Center closed last year, and in fact, part of that was, was, was true. What we did as a department, as, as in response to the budget cuts around the state, we elected to close the main side of Powhatan Correctional Center, but we left Powhatan Reception and Classification Center as well as Powhatan Medical Unit untouched. So, and then with that, what happened was, we tried to consolidate the entire State Farm property. So, I'm actually a warden of the State Farm Correctional Complexes, which includes Deep Metal Correctional Center, Powhatan Reception and Classification Center, Powhatan Medical Unit, James River Work Center, which is on the other side of the river in Goochlin, and as well as we provide supervision, security supervision for the Security Care Unit down at MCV. So, currently, we have about 550 state employees working on the property, as well as 100 contractors, and we supervise more than 1,600 offenders. So, the property still is alive and well, which is, which is good. It was unfortunate that we did lose about 300 positions, jobs, with the budget cuts. But of those 300 positions, there were about 55 or 56 local residents. But of those 300 positions, when we started the budget cuts, we, we thought that there were going to be massive layoffs, but in the end, by December and the budget projections with the state, we actually did not lay off anyone. We displaced many people. We, we had about 172 people go to about 20 different prisons, and then we had quite a few retirements out of, out of the 300. We had over 50 retirements. So let me just kinda, kinda brief you on each of the complexes, so you know what is actually going on. Deep Metal Correctional Center, 725-bed facility. It's an intensive reentry facility. We also have a faith-based reentry. The sentences of the offenders there go up to about 20 years, but we concentrate on those offenders that are being released and being released in this area. That's why it's, it's an intensive reentry. We have a school program there. We have plumbing vocation, horticultural vocation, quite a few greenhouses, and we have an academic school. Powhatan Reception and Classification Center is about a 500-bed facility. We, and within the facility, we, we did not affect the shops that are in there. So, you might have heard of, we actually have a grade A milk plant in there that provides all the milk for the Department of Corrections, which is about 35,000 offenders. And we also provide milk for one dining hall of Virginia Tech. We provide the dining hall at Radford. We also provide milk for 20,000 inmates in regional jails or federal institutions, all the way from Morgantown, West Virginia, down to Charlotte, North Carolina. We have a tag shop. You, I think you all know that your license plates are all made at Powhatan Reception Center. Every last license plate in Virginia is made there and it continues to be made there. We have a print shop that does most of the printing for every state agency, as well as a silk screen and sign shop. We also, with the closing of Powhatan Main, we helped the county out by creating the county jail over in Reception Center. So we have a 22-bed county jail that your sheriff uses, and we provide all the supervision for that county jail. We also, within Powhatan Reception, have Powhatan Medical Unit, which is a full-service infirmary of about 50 beds, and this is where inmates come to spend the last days of their life or the recovering from surgery or have become ill. And we, we try to get them out of MCV as quickly as possible, so it's a full-service infirmary. Across the river, we have James River Work Center, which is a 300-bed facility. Our concentration is sending out work gangs. We have over 15 work gangs that go out every single day. Some of them come in the community, some of them go to the Capitol, but the majority of them actually work the farm. And then I'll tell you about our agribusiness in a minute. We also have, you might have heard of the Thoroughbred Retirement Foundation. Down there, we got about 20 retired thoroughbreds in our claim to fame down there. If you came to Open Barn a couple Sundays ago, is we have the direct son and grandson of Secretary, you might have heard of that horse here in Virginia. So, and we try to get horses adopted, and if they're unadoptable, then we, we just take care of them until, until the end of their life. And, and that is a national program called the Thoroughbred Retirement Foundation. We also provide a supervision of a Security Care Unit, MCV. We have about 60 staff members working down there. We have 16 inpatient beds at MCV. We also supervise about 50 off-site, off-ward outpatient services. And we, we also provide the supervision of any offender that is off-ward and cannot fit in the Security Care Unit. Our agribusiness on the property, we have 170 dairy cattle. We produce 2,600 gallons of milk per day. We have two milkings of about 24 cattle. We have over 500 beef cattle that we raise. We participate in the Artificial Insemination Program through Virginia Tech. Virginia Tech studies a lot of our cattle around the department. We also have a sawmill, and we raise steers for periods of time on the property. And as well, you've probably heard, our recent claim to fame is we have some movie sets out there. You know, the most recent famous movie was shot was Lincoln, but there's some other, other movies and some series being, being shot out there. This is actually the fourth prison that I've run. I've been a warden for over 12 years, and I've run Coffey Wood Correctional Center, Green Rock Correctional Center. I came to Powhatan in 2011, and then now they asked me to run the whole farm. Many of us wardens believe that you allow us to work in your county, so we give back to the county. So we have employee funds. You might hear, like, last year, we donated money. We had, we had employees raising money, fundraisers to give back to the county. We gave to your food bank. They may sponsor some other local charities. I personally sat in a dunking booth to allow my staff to dunk me to try to, you know, raise some money for your food bank. And it, it's actually a partnership, a partnership between the state and locality, just like we, we do for the county jail. You know, we provide that service for a gate, a great collaboration between the state government and county government, and, and we appreciate the opportunity to employ so many people in this fine county. The Virginia Department of Corrections, obviously, every Department of Corrections, the main mission is to return better men and women to this society, you know, after their incarceration. But it doesn't end with just them serving time. We actually have to reach out to the community, because we try to prepare the men and women the best we can with the programs, but they're really not out there living in the community. Therefore, under the, the, the old governor created all these reentry councils around the state, and we collaborate with corrections, with social services, with faith-based organizations, with nonprofits, to try to give these men and women opportunity after they are released. It is difficult for these men and women who get released. For example, you might have a gentleman who serves 20 years for maybe a violent offense, but he does serve his sentence, and then he gets out, and then some of the community hold that against him forever. But we still are trying to produce good citizens, and what we call in the department is lasting public safety. We enjoy Mr. Tucker running, running our Community Advisory Board. We do some good things with the board in returning citizens. They just donated some money to, to have clothes, suits upon release, and shoes of, of our offenders. And we're constantly trying to build collaborations with our community stakeholders. And lastly, my goal is to provide a good employment setting for our fine citizens. You know, not all of them come from this county, but there's over 600 people that work in this county and hopefully are spending money in this county, and we want it, and we want it to remain. So, there is a commitment in the department in looking at the property to enhance its correctional functionality. So, we got a lot going on out there. We're proud to be in this county, and we will give back when we can, but we also need help in the community, you know, to return these citizens, these returning citizens, and help them get their, get, get their feet on the ground. So, thank you. Very good.
May I make a comment? Just so you know, Catherine Pemberton, our Director of Social Services, is the person that runs the reentry for Powhatan County, so we know her well. And just today, we met with your Nikki Linum and Mrs. Wyler and I to talk about further use of the offenders on, on county property, and we really appreciate the cooperation in that regard.
Yeah, that's no problem. I mean, oftentimes, we'll get calls, you know, you might have an affair coming up, or, you know, we'll bring out offenders to set up tents and, you know, move some things around, and it's, it's a good collaboration. We have the, the labor, it's cheap, and you, you have the need. So, you can call on us at any time. We're gonna help you if we can, if we possibly can. That's giving back to this community.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Warden, I was contacted recently by a group of gentlemen who do field trial dogs here in the county. I think it's the Tide Water Retriever Club. They mentioned at one point they had use of some of the grounds, and I'm not sure exactly which location.
Yeah, I think they, they use our rec pond occasionally, but I'm not, I haven't had contact with them in quite some time, so.
The information they shared with me that they no longer have privileges, had privileges at one time, would like to go back and revisit that, if, if possible?
Yeah, that's no problem. There's some things that we have curtailed based on the, the movie sets. And, for example, we, we don't allow hunting on the, on this side of the river anymore based on, on that. We have so much activity from the Virginia film industry.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, I can contact them, or they can contact me, and we'll, we'll sit down and we'll, we'll see what we can do.
I'll try to set something up. Thank you, sir.
Okay, no problem.
Any other questions?
Warden, we know you have to leave. We do know that you're on 24/7, so please don't feel like you gotta stay.
I do appreciate it. If any of you got any difficulties with State Farm property, never hesitate to call. I can come back and I can, I can brief the board on any issue at any time, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden Dillman. Moving to proclamation, 2015-07. Mr. Hodge, I think is gonna go down and take care of this reporting?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman.
Before I read this resolution, I'd like, if I could, have Scout Eric Miller and his father and family come down, as well as anyone else perhaps from the troop, if they're, if they happen to be here. This is a proclamation recognizing Eric M. Miller's achievement of Eagle Scout rank. Whereas scouting for both boys and girls has been an integral part of our community, as well as a positive influence for many years, and whereas the Eagle rank is the highest rank in scouting and is obtained by earning 21 merit badges and implementing skills in a troop leadership position. And whereas, in addition, the Eagle candidate must plan, develop, and direct a major community service project through its entire completion. And whereas, on March 3rd, 2015, Scout Eric M. Miller, member of Boy Scouts of America Troop 800, successfully completed all requirements for achieving scouting's Eagle rank. And whereas, in earning his Eagle rank, Scout Eric M. Miller earned a total of 29 merit badges, camped over 150 nights, including two long-term camps to the National High Adventure Bases, Northern Tier in Minnesota and Philmont in New Mexico. And whereas, for his Eagle project, Scout Eric M. Miller built 10 picnic tables, including two handicapped for Powhatan State Park, and in addition, built a raised flower bed and stepping stone path around the American flagpole at the entrance to the park. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and congratulates Eagle Scout Eric M. Miller on his outstanding accomplishments, extends its deepest appreciation for all of his dedicated work, and wishes him the best in all of his future endeavors. Adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on May 4th, 2015.
Is there a motion? Can I get a second?
Sergeant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before I present this, I just wanna say, from one Scout Master for Troop 498 to another Scout Master and someone who achieves Eagle, you may not know, but the statistics show that of all scouts who enter Boy Scouts, only about 1% ever make Eagle. And the program, of course, has been on, in America for over 100 years. So this is kind of like flying jets in the Air Force. When I was in Air Force ROTC, I learned from the Colonel, my first year, that only 1% of the Air Force flies, and those who fly jets is 1/10 of 1%. So this is analogous to that. It's a huge achievement, and sometimes people fail to recognize the significance of the achievement and how long it takes, how much work an Eagle has to do. And then, of course, just as fighter pilots know, once you're a fighter pilot, you're always a fighter pilot, and once an Eagle, you're always an Eagle, regardless. So I just want to congratulate Eric personally, on behalf of Troop 498 at a St. Benedict Catholic Church, which I'm the Scout Master of. And Eric, this is a huge achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments that you would like to make, Mr. Miller?
I want Mr. Hodge, no way.
Yep, perfect. Mr. Miller, would you like to say anything at all? We don't, if you, you don't have to.
More than welcome to. Thanks for recognizing me. You're welcome.
Perfect. Well deserved, a thank you for what you've done, and make sure you wear that proudly and put it on your resumes, always. Thank you.
Just real quickly, how many picnic tables, including the handicap and something else, the entrance to the park?
I built 10 picnic tables with metal frames, and actually, there was three handicap ones and seven regular ones. And then, it was a 12-foot raised flower bed around the flagpole with a walkway leading from the building that you pay the parking in the park.
That's impressive. I just finished building a Bluebird box today. Haberdiafe for humanity, could have probably built a house in the time it took me to build that box, but that's quite impressive, Eric. Well done. We're proud of you.
If you haven't been, the Powhatan State Park is very nice. Ranger Lipskin does a good job out there, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hodge. We're gonna have proclamation, R. 2015-08, which is Building Safety Month. We'll just make sure that we vote on this and we get a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I have Mr. Norvik read the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. And I think we've got several people in emergency services here. Would that be true? Larry, you can call them down if you want. There's the chief.
Anybody affected by this, would you please come down and join me?
Mr. Nunley, Alan, Chris, anybody else?
Chief.
Chief?
Proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week, May 17th to 23rd, 2015. Whereas the dedicated EMTs, EMT intermediates and paramedics of Powhatan Volunteer Rescue Squad have partnered with the Powhatan County Fire and Rescue Department and Emergency Services Solutions to provide exemplary emergency medical care and a vital service to the citizens of Powhatan County. And whereas, Powhatan County Fire and Rescue Department, including the Powhatan Volunteer Rescue Squad and Emergency Services Solutions, are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Services Team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas, the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Powhatan Board of Supervisors that the week of May 17 to 23, 2015, is designated as Emergency Medical Services Week in Powhatan County, and the Board joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, May 4th. I so move.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bravo.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. We do now move on to proclamation, R. 2015-10, Elderly Americans Month. Mr. Tucker's gonna take this.
Mr. Chairman, receiving this award today, the knight is Joan Dos, who is our coordinator for, for, for Senior Connections here in the county, and she's the person who actually rides herd on our senior population of Goochlin and Powhatan. She's here for Dr. Thelma Watson, which I think, who I think many of you know. Whereas Powhatan County, Virginia includes a thriving community of older Virginians who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas, Powhatan County is committed to helping individuals live longer, healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas, every citizen is urged to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who contribute greatly to our community. And whereas, since 1965, the Older Americans Act and other programs have provided services to help other, older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing medical and health care systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and supporting some of life's basic functions such as breathing, bathing, and preparing meals. Whereas, the programs provided by the Powhatan Department of Social Services and Senior Connections, the Capital Agency on Aging, support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of our diverse citizenry. And whereas, Powhatan County recognizes the value of community engagement and service in helping older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to our community others. And whereas, the Powhatan community provides opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting opportunities for activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, and ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and the experience of our older adults. Therefore, therefore be it proclaimed by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors that May 2015 is Older Americans Month, and the Board of Supervisors calls this observance to the attention of all citizens. Adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on May the 4th, 2005. Mr. Chairman, that's a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If you'd like to say something, please do so.
In front of you, there may be a flyer, as I wear two hats in Powhatan County. One is Chairman of a Triad, as well as the Senior Connections. I'd love to see each and one of you, each and every one of you out there. You can bring something for the yard sale, and you can bring canned goods that will go back into the community, to the different food pantries. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you. I'm gonna read proclamation, 2015-11, Business Appreciation Month for May. Could Angie Campbell please come down? I think you have another board member here too, Chris DeHart. And this is, this, this resolution is just not for the chamber, but we brought the chamber down, but there are other business owners in this, in this audience tonight, and I'd like to make sure you realize that this is for you also, Mr. Burris, Mr. Kofor, Mr. Sowers, and anyone else who runs a business and runs a business in the county. Proclamation, Business Appreciation Month, May 2015. Whereas Powhatan County businesses play a critical role in strengthening our community through job creation by embracing innovative technology and employing a diverse workforce to preserve the economic well-being for all our citizens. And whereas, Powhatan County is pleased to have a thriving base of more than 1,200 businesses that provide nearly 8,000 essential jobs and offer a variety- that provide nearly 8,000 essential jobs and offer a variety of services and products to the citizens of Powhatan. And whereas Powhatan businesses operate in diverse industries, including advanced manufacturing, construction, life sciences, tourism, agribusinesses, and information technology. And whereas the business, businesses provide local revenues for which the entire local citizenry benefit. And whereas Powhatan County is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of existing businesses, entrepreneurs, small minority, and women-owned businesses, and the major employers that contribute greatly to the economy of Powhatan. And whereas the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors encourages citizens of Powhatan to recognize and express the support of our businesses for the essential role they play in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Supervi, by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors that May 2015 is Business Appreciation Month, and that the Board recognizes and celebrates Powhatan County's existing businesses and the significant contributions they make to the community and to the quality of life of our citizens. Adopted by Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on May 4th, 2015. This is a form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Angie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for what you do. To the other business owners, thank for what you do, and I'll go on my pulpit for a minute. Please spend your money in the county. Thank you. At this time, we'll have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes per individual, five minutes per group. And if, please make sure that you're not speaking on anything that's on a public hearing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, just one, Adam Sadler, 983 Mannikin Road. Next week, I have the honor and privilege to travel with approximately eight officers, either from the state police or the Powhatan County Sheriff's Office, to celebrate and remember the officers that lost their lives last year, as we honor them in Washington, DC, and put their names on the wall. So I bring this up just because I want the citizens of Powhatan and the citizens of the United States to realize that we have officers that lose their lives every day, every second, every minute, defending and giving us the ability to have the lives that we have. So we do this on our own time, on our own dime. It's very important to us. I've done it since 2006, and so has Brad and several of our other officers, when we lost our officer in 2006, September 20th. It's, it's a privilege that I take to be able to go up there to not only support the families of those lost officers, but also the colleagues and other bosses and people that work alongside of those officers, and help comfort them and give them the respect that they get, that they need and deserve. So as next week comes around, if you guys could keep all of those folks in your thoughts and prayers, it's a very difficult time. It's a very emotional time. You're up, you're down, you're up, you're down. You walk around the wall, you read letters from small children to their mother and father that had passed. Stories are told at a candlelight vigil where each officer that lost their life last year's name is written. If you get the opportunity to go up to Washington, to Washington, DC, they have a wall in Judicial Square, and it has every single police officer that's lost their life on it. Every year, they find officers that they missed, some of which were killed back in the 1800s, 1700s, and so forth. It's quite an experience. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to go and represent the Powhatan Sheriff's Office in Virginia. And I just wanted to make you guys aware of it and thank each one of you guys for the ability to serve every one of you guys on, in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public comment period. This time we have consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Clark, 1036 Dawson Road, and I would like to ask a question. What do the Board have plans for children with special needs at school?
Pardon?
Children with special needs.
Ma'am, we'll get back with you. We typically don't answer the questions at the public comment period, but I will say that that question probably, while we will make sure someone gets back with you, would be better filtered towards the school board.
Okay.
That's their jobs to address special needs kids.
Okay.
But we still will make sure someone, we pass that along to someone, and someone will follow up. Please, can you give us your address?
1036 Dawson Road, Powhatan, Virginia.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank you all for recognizing everybody tonight. It was, it just touched my heart. And thank you very much for recognizing everybody.
Thank you, and we'll make sure someone gets back with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
At this time, I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda now. Any questions or concerns on the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we agree to the consent agenda as presented by the county administrator.
Second. We got a second from Mr. Hodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this point, we'll move on to appointments of boards, commissions. We have 9A as the Economic Development Authority. I would ask that we can defer this till our June 1st meeting. We just recently had our bond restructuring, and myself and Mr., several members of the EDA had to sign that, so I think it's maybe best that we defer this until June 1st, and then we make our appointments after that.
So what you're saying, so time an issue, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. The 9B is a Extension Leadership Council. It's on page 60 of our agenda, and I think Mr. Hodge, this is done by district, and this individual who's applied is in your district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and what I would do at this point, I know, and you try to do this a little bit as a kind of a policy on, at least the action the Board has taken as a whole on these, and I think you'd be good at this one as well. I think the, I think that slot is, Mr. Bailey's slot, or that slot comes up in May 30th, or May 31st, 2015. I don't know if we'll have, I think District 1 opens up at that time, too. You've got another one that we're waiting on. And maybe what I would do at this time, I think even though I certainly wouldn't have a problem moving Mr. Bailey to be reappointed to that Board, what I'd like to do with the Board's permission is just defer it to the next meeting. That'll be in May before those all expire, if I'm right. And then what we could do is, if there's any other applicants at that time that might want to apply for that position, then at least we have left it open for the public to apply. And Mr. Bailey obviously still is, is the only applicant. It's kind of, he's it. If we do get somebody else, obviously, and then the Board can at least consider other applicants as well. So I, that's kind of, my motion would be just to defer that. I know we're waiting for District 1. There's still an opening there as well. We might also have that, maybe perhaps several people would do that as well. So with that, I would just move it to the next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting, and defer it to that time.
Mr. Hodge, would that be through our June 1st meeting, because we have two meetings scheduled? 18th and 20th.
Yeah, let's do this.
You want to defer it till June 1st?
Yes. Sorry for my third specific. I would just defer it to the 18th. I think we have that, if we have an 18th meeting as a regularly scheduled, first and thirds, I would just defer it to the 18th, and that way we can, since the expiration's at the 30th of May, that allows us to fill it before it expires.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second, Mr. Hodge's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to our first public hearing. This is on Resolution 2015, 35, approving a secondary system construction budget priority list for FY 16, six-year secondary road plan.
Mr. Albin?
Mr. Albin going to take this, or is VDOT going to take this? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sari.
Members of the Board, County Administrator, appreciate the opportunity to come before you to present the Powhatan County Secondary System Six-Year Road Program.
Mr., can you please just say your name for the record, please?
Butch Sari.
Thank you.
I'm the resident engineer for this, for this area for VDOT. I brought with me today also Kevin Reichert, who's the Assistant Resident Engineer, and several of the board members have, had mentioned some roadway issues that weren't specifically associated with six-year plan. And if it's all right with the Board, I'd like to get Kevin to give you all an update on that. Will that be all right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, as Butch mentioned, my name's Kevin Reichert, and I'm the Assistant Resident Administrator for this area. So I'll just quickly give you all an update on some of the issues that you all asked about at the last meeting. You all asked us to look into pulling crash data for intersections within the county. I've spoken to our Traffic Engineering Department, and they do have all that information. They're in the process of finalizing it. What they told me it will include is that it'll look at the actual crash numbers for those intersections, and it will compare it to what would have been the expected crash pattern for that particular type of intersection. So it'll look at whether it's a rural intersection, urban intersection, signalized, unsignalized. And then from that data, we can work with the county and the Board members to, to look at prioritizing intersection improvement. You also asked about a few intersections and possibly looking at some, some warning signs. We looked at Route 711 just west of 288. Feel that's a good location for advanced intersection sign, so Traffic Engineer is going to analyze it, and we'll probably also look at putting an advisory speed plaque on that as well, to hopefully slow down vehicles there. So they'll check the site distance, and from there, they can determine the appropriate speed warning to put there. Old Tavern and Route 13, Traffic Engineer, we're going to review the stop signs location. So we're going to look at whether we should put up the oversized stop sign, or we can add the stop sign ahead sign as well. We may do one or both of those.
Thank you.
They'll look at that assessment. Let's see. Route 1,002 and Route 13, I know there's an intersection warning sign in both directions now, but there's not, there are not speed advisory plaques there. So we're going to look at what additional signage we could put at that location to help there. They're going to, Traffic Engineer is going to look at what the site distance is at that location as well.
Thank you for looking into that.
And then the last thing we had was the Route 13, and then Route 522, the rumble strips. We're finalizing that, the more recent crash data, so we should have that for you all fairly shortly as well, so we can look at whether we want to continue with the centerline rumble strips, or if we want to look at doing something different on those routes.
Okay. I have a question.
Sure.
So the data, the accident data for the intersections, when did we anticipate being able to see that?
What I'm told is that we should have it shortly, that Central Office already has it, and that it should be, should not take long for us to pull all those intersections. So I would hope within next month or two is what I was hoping for. I was hoping I'd have something for you this evening, but we just didn't get it pulled together fast enough.
Have you seen any of the data yet?
I have not seen any of the data, no, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you know what the, what's your date range is on your crash numbers?
I'm not sure what it'll be in this report. I mean, just our system, when we pull crash data, you know, a lot of times we look at, either we'll go back three years, or we'll go back five years, but in that crash data, what it'll have is, typically it only includes crashes where there is property damage, or there is an injury for it to show up in our system. But I can get you all the specifics on what the years would be.
Thank you. I have a question for Butch, unless, any other questions of the Board members?
Thank you.
Mr. Sari?
Yes.
When do we, when is the dead, the drop dead date that we have to pass this for you all to be able to do your stuff?
We like to have it in before June 1st, because our fiscal year is July 1st, beginning of our fiscal year.
So would June 1st work?
It could work, yeah.
Here's, here's my concern.
Okay.
Back to what I said at last meeting. Dorset Road make, let's just use Dorset Road. If Dorset Road comes in as the number-one most dangerous intersection in our county, if I had known that when we prioritized this last six-year secondary road plan, I may have chose to use that in front of another project. I understand funds are there and all those things, but I want to understand that data. And if it is, then have at least an opportunity to digest it and understand, should we try to prioritize that in front of something? Because my understanding was that Dorset would be addressed in revenue sharing, which didn't work out. So now we have an intersection that could be the most, one of the most, have the most accident data, most accident history involved, that we may not be prioritizing properly. So that's why I wanted to understand when we could get the data, how quickly we can get that, so that, as Mr. Hodge says, we have the facts to be able to make some decisions, and an informed decision. So that's, you know.
Well, it's certainly up to the Board. If you need to defer this, it's certainly up, up to your choice to do that, and we'll work with you, and we'll try to push getting that, that data as soon as possible.
I understand it's a process that needs to be taken.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Just a question for Kevin. Kevin, when you were doing intersections, what about off-road accidents, you know, like we have on Huguenot Trail, where we have the, the S turns is what I call them down there in that area, you know, with the east, Mannikin Town Ferry Road? It's not necessarily an intersection, but it's a lot of off-road accidents. Would that show up in your report anyplace?
I think the report that, that we're pulling now would focus on intersections, and that's because when I called to check on it after the last board meeting, I was told that that was something that was already in process for other counties around the state as well. So, so that's an intersection analysis. Now, if you want us to look at specific sections of roadway, we have that capability as well. We would just need to manually go in, and we can plug in, you know, from, from this intersection to this intersection, or we can look at mile markers and pull crash data that way as well.
I would like for you to do that on, on Huguenot Trail Road, because I've seen the data in previous years. There's a large number of off-road accidents, and that's stretched from Mannikin Town Ferry Road east into 288.
Mr. Williams, I've seen that. I got that in the last bit of data I got for the 13 rumble strips. They were, gave it all to me, from intersections to...
Yeah, they showed, they'll, they'll show you the location, and they'll give you the frequency of the accident, and the type of accident.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tucker, you had a question?
Mr. Sari, and this is not part of the six-year plan. I'll put you on the spot, and I don't mean to be pushing you hard, but I am pushing you hard. Can you give us a three-sentence definition of what the entrance to the park is like? The reason I ask is I almost saw it again, sitting there waiting to pull out, the school bus across the road coming out of the park, pulled halfway into the road, and somebody stepped on the brakes and almost hit him broadside. And it's because of that dead, that dead spot of trying to get out into the highway, and this is why we're trying to fix this intersection, to keep exactly this thing from happening. It was a close call. So you gave us three-sentence, what the status of it is?
I can tell you, it is being worked on constantly by our Location and Design Section. We are still negotiating with, with the park for the agreement for the construction. We're still going to work within the budget that we were allocated, so the improvements will be done. I don't have a schedule right now, but I did receive an email from one of the park directors asking the same questions you're asking. I don't have that email with me, but asking that same question, how are we coming along with that? And there are plans, and our, our Location and Design Section is working on that.
So we don't have a shovel-in-the-ground date yet?
We don't have that date yet.
I'm going to make sure I understood what you just said. You said that the negotiation is ongoing between DCR and VDOT. I thought that was all agreed to, that that money was going to be transferred from DCR to you ASAP, and that was a year ago.
And it's just the, the agreement between the two state agencies that there, we have not gotten a final agreement from DCR.
Do we need to do anything?
I don't think so. I think it is right there, right on the edge, getting ready to be done, but we just need all the signatures.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, let me follow...
Mr. Chairman, let me follow up.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
I was under the same impression Carson was. Now, are we talking about the agreement, or an interagency transfer?
It's an interagency transfer is actually what it is, because the money was allocated to DCR, not to VDOT. We're actually doing the design on our overhead cost right now. We're not charging anything to that dollar amount. So the whole dollar amount is still there for, right away, in construction, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's a relatively straightforward transaction, an interagency transfer. I mean, they happen every day.
Well, one of the issues is the way that DCR contracts, the way VDOT contracts, is not the same, how they write their contracts. And DCR wants VDOT to follow their procedures on when it is constructed. So we're working out the details on it. I'll try to get you something more detailed than that.
If, if, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. If it requires something from the chairman of the board, a letter, or a telephone call, or if you need me or any one of us to go with you to negotiate, or kick butt whatever needs to be done, you need to ask us, so we can help you.
Well, I appreciate that.
You can leave me out on the last part, Mr. Tucker. I'm not ready for that.
Okay. Any other questions of VDOT at this time? I still want to have the public hearing on this, and then we'll make, figure it out from here. We're going to now open the public hearing, Resolution 2015-35, approving the six-year secondary system construction budget. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, I would like to defer voting on this resolution until our June 1st meeting, with a clear understanding of VDOT. We need the accident data history that we were looking for, to include what Mr. Williams addressed, any updates we can get on Mr. Tucker's situation. If we do need a help, we, some of us would be glad to help in any way we can. But I'd like to move that we defer this resolution until our June 1st meeting, and we be prepared that night to vote and adopt the six-year secondary plan based upon the accident data we get.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Butch. This time, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-07, granting conditional use permit to Joseph and Jenny Easter, Best Jessup Arrington for a temporary secondary dwelling unit. Mr. Altman, you going to take this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, we have a public hearing to consider ordinance O. 2015-7, granting a conditional use permit to Joseph and Jenny Easter. Mr. and Ms. Easter, as applicants, are requesting renewal of a conditional use permit to maintain a temporary second dwelling, second dwelling for an elderly or a firm family member at 6,071 Old Buckingham Road. The property is currently zoned A-10 agricultural 10 district. A temporary secondary dwelling for an elderly or a firm family member is provided per 83-164 C-1 of the zoning ordinance by conditional use permit within the A-10 district, provided that the use complies with all the applicable requirements as listed in the zoning ordinance. The initial conditional use permit for this project, property, was issued in October of 2005, and there have been three renewals since that point in time. No violations of any of the conditions have occurred during that time period. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at their April 7, 2015, meeting to hear public comment on the request. No citizen spoke during the public hearing. The commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the request to the board supervisors with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall consent to an annual administrative inspections by the planning department staff for compliance with the conditions, the requirements of the CUP. The applicant shall sign a list of adopted conditions for the CUP, signifying acceptance and intent to comply with these conditions. Failure to comply with the conditions of the CUP may result in the issuance of a notice of violation by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator may present the CUP to the board supervisors for revocation if the NOV is not resolved as directed. Upon issuance of a third notice of violation of the permit and failure for the permit holder to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the zoning administrator shall present the CUP to the board for revocation. Four, the elderly or a firm family member may reside in the principal dwelling, and the secondary, second dwelling may be occupied by the owner of the lot and dwellings. Five, the elderly and firm person occupying one dwelling shall be related by blood, marriage, or adoption to the occupant of the other dwelling. Six, in the event that Best Jessup Arrington ceases to reside on the property, the CUP shall be considered null and void, and the second dwelling shall be removed from the property or otherwise converted to a non-conforming use. Notice of the non-residency shall be immediately provided to the planning department, and removal or conversion of the dwelling shall be, to a compliant use, shall be completed within 60 days. Seven, the address needed, address numbers need to be a minimum of four inches in height and reflective, so they are highly visible from both directions on Old Buckingham Road. Address numbers shall be maintained throughout the life of the CUP. Eight, all activities associated with the CUP shall be in compliance with all state and federal laws. The site shall be fully complied with all applicable provisions of Section 83-164 of the Palatine County zoning ordinance throughout the life of the CUP. And the last condition, this conditional use permit shall be issued to Joseph and Jenny Easter to maintain a temporary second dwelling for Jessup, Best Jessup Arrington on the subject property at 6,071 Old Buckingham Road. The applicant is here this evening. There was some, at discussion, there was some comment or discussion about the address numbers. Those are in place. We have evidence of that, so that, if there are any other questions of the board, of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of staff? Would the applicant like to say anything that's not necessary? Thank you. At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-07, granting conditional use permit to Joseph and Jenny Easter. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. This is my district. I voted for this many times with the Planning Commission, and I want to applaud Mr. and Ms. Easter for providing the care for Ms. Arrington. Thank you for what you do, and I move to approve ordinance 2015-07 as presented.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-06, amending Article IV of Village Growth Area District, Article VII. Mr. Altman, will you present this for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this evening, we have a public hearing to consider amending Article IV of Village Growth Area Districts, Article VII, Use Standards, and Article VIII, Development Standards of Chapter 83, Zoning Ordinance of the Code of Palatine County, Virginia. The, as you may remember, the board directed the county administration to review the provisions of the zoning ordinance related to the Route 711 Village Special Area Plan overlay district, and move forward with deleting the overlay district. Staff prepared a review of the overlay district as a first step with review with the Planning Commission, which included recommendations on provisions that should be retained of the existing overlay, moving them into other parts of our zoning ordinance. We presented that to the Planning Commission at their December, or January 6 workshop. From there, we went through a series of workshops in both February and March. At their April 7 meeting, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider the request and solicit public comment on the ordinance. There were two citizens that spoke at the public hearing, both of which lived west of 288, and commented that they would like to have some of those requirements placed on properties west of 288, although that wasn't the reason we were there for the public hearing that night, but were interested in seeing the quality of development maintained along the corridor or even past 288. After the public hearing, in some discussion, the Planning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to the board. You have a copy of that ordinance in your packet, I believe, beginning on page 105. If there are any questions that the board has related to the proposed amendment, I will be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Williams?
Archie, I talked to Ed about this. In the overlay district today, you have that provision where it limits the number of gas pumps.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
That's being brought forward, and where will it go to?
That is going into, under the Use Standards section of our zoning ordinance, that will be in Section 83-432, under Item 8. It's on page 110 of your agenda packet. Number seven is added, so that when we add that section, bring it over in full, it still limits the two, to two fuel dispensing islands, which no more than double-sided on each. So that comes over into that section of the Use Standards.
So with that going over to the Use Standards, what zoning districts will it be applicable to?
It will be applicable to all the zoning districts that are in, so what we've done in a nutshell is, while we've done away with the overlay itself, what we've done, and particularly with this item and some others, we've drawn on that special area plan map in the comp plan. So those zoning districts that are in that area, in that special, in that portion of the comp plan, all of that that's recommended, it would apply to any development of a gas station in that whole, that area. Not just one specific zoning district, but all of them.
Right. So special area plan would mean on both sides of Route 60?
Yes, as designated in the comp plan, you're correct.
So going from Chesfield County line at Route 60, you would only want two aisles or two gas pumps, or? Ed's shaking his head.
Right. Right, correct. It only applies to the area on 711.
Right.
So coming from the county line...
Okay, you said special, so I got...
Yeah. It's specifically drafted, that language is specifically drafted for that Route 711 village, not 60.
So it would not apply to the special planning area on east side of Route 60 going into Flat Rock?
No, sir, and it would not apply here in the courthouse special area either, just the 711 area.
Okay. That's my question. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Altman. This time, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance 2015-6, amending Article IV of the Village Growth Area District. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
Some more, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. This time, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance 2014-24, amending and reenacting Chapter 68 subdivision ordinances of the Code of Palatine County. Mr. Altman?
Mr. Chairman, ordinance 2014-24 is an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 68, the subdivision ordinance of the Code of Palatine, the County of Palatine. I guess a brief overview, as we began discussing this issue with the Planning Commission, as we wound down our review of the zoning ordinance and adopted the zoning ordinance, we started talking with them back in a workshop environment back in May of last year. We worked through several workshops, conducted a public hearing with the Planning Commission in September, had as a discussion item with the board in September '14, then a workshop in November, public hearing in December, another workshop in February, discussion item at the April 20 meeting here this evening for a public hearing. Worked through several items as you, as we have a proposed subdivision ordinance in your packet, beginning with its table of contents on page 123, and then going through, I would draw your attention to the list of concerns that have been expressed either by citizens, board members, anyone, beginning on page 226, running through page 240. There's a total of eighty, a total of 54 issues that have been raised at this point in time, or 55 issues that have been raised. The majority of the comments that we've received in here, I think, really boils down to a handful of items for the board to consider. How do we treat large lot development moving into the future? Currently, our current subdivision ordinance provides that it is, large lot development, which is 10 or more acre lots, is not considered a subdivision, so not held to the same standard under our subdivision ordinance, other than what is in that one section related to large lot development. The issue of flag lots and how to treat those private roads, which the Planning Commission will bring you a recommendation at your meeting on the 18th. And we have the other two really issues, I think, are the pavement standard and the access management standard. Those are kind of the issues. A lot of the items that were brought forth from a question or concern standpoint, you find in both the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance, we're just bringing that language over. I did amend at the last meeting that this list of items to include the individual's name at the end of each issue that asked that question of staff. Additionally, we prepared a checklist, if you will, for lack of a better word, detailing what the requirements were currently in the current ordinance of large lot development versus your standard subdivision, and then what it would be under the proposed ordinance. That's on 241 with all the checks, to give you an idea of what the requirements are today, and what they would be in the future. And then additionally, we looked at a comparison of the current and current ordinance versus the proposed ordinance for the plat requirements, did the same type of checklist for you to give you a visual of what those would look like, provided some language regarding flag lots for the board's consideration and review. I know you have a public hearing this evening on the matter, and we're scheduled to talk about this at our 18th meeting. If there are any questions that you would like for me to address at this time, I'd be more than happy to. Otherwise, I'd recommend you hold a public hearing, and we hear what the good folks of the county have to say.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Archie, I'm prepared to go through your matrix, you know, it's 1 through 50.
Mm-hmm.
I remember the last time we did this, it was late at night, and I'm not sure if staff got the direction that they needed from the board in terms of a majority or consensus going forward as it related to each one of these items that you have in your matrix.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Yeah. What I would like, quite honestly, is to go through these, so before we put Mrs. Wall and Tom's office through the pain and suffering of making these amendments to the ordinance, because what will happen unfortunately is, the document we inherited, once we start making changes, all the formatting goes haywire, and she has to go back and then fix all of that. If we could get a yea or nay on these issues, so then when I can, when we provide her direction, we're ready to go, and we bring back the document that the board's looking for, that's what I'd like to be able to do. And whether we do that tonight, or on the 18th, or how you want to do it, is completely up to you all. And we can do it this evening.
It's going to take some time to go through all 50 of these, because I've, it's only a few that I don't have some questions about.
Okay.
But I think you summarized real well what the issues are before us. Now, on the 18th, we're having the Planning Commission, or Planning Commission representative, come in and present on private roads, which is a big part of this.
Yes.
You know? And that's scheduled on the workshop to come after taking action on the subdivision ordinance as we have it set up now.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see those two flip-flopped if we could.
Yeah.
And just as a way of comment, Billy and I were talking before the meeting, we've got, I think, this is my personal opinion, we've got too much on that workshop for the 18th. Going from the history with Carson, Billy and I on the Planning Commission, the issue of private roads is going to consume a great deal of time, because there's a history, isn't there? And we're all familiar with that history. So I'd like for staff and the chairman to look at how we could pare that meeting back, and maybe spend the focus, you know, on the subdivision, go through that, go through, like I said, give you the direction that you need, but only after we've done the private road discussion with the Planning Commission's representative, and then determine where we are, and go forward with the subdivision ordinance with the large lot, for example, the private road subdivisions, and what is going to be exempted or not exempted from the subdivision ordinance, what is going to be required as part of, you know, the division versus a lesser standard that exists today. Go through all those issues then.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'm in support of Mr. Williams's proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions of staff at this time? I still want to have, I'm going to have a public hearing, I want to hear what the public has to say, and then we'll figure it out from there. At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2014-24, amending and reacting Chapter 68 of subdivision ordinance. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Woody Kover. I live here in Palatine. I worked with the zoning ordinance probably forty-some years. I have come, several concerns about this, which I plan on adopting, and most of them is on the citizen concerns.
Excuse me, Mr. Kover?
I said, most of the concerns I have is stuff we have... I say, most of the concerns I have is stuff we have put in for the citizens and supervisors, like, uh, number eight, y'all talking about utilities has to be underground for single cuts and for large lots, you know, I don't think you need to do that, that should be overhead if you're in a large lot development. And like number 14 on the flag lots, I think that's, should stay in that ordinance. Anything in that deal with the flag lots, especially with family exemption, you need to have those flag lots. And, uh, but having trash receptacles in subdivision on all the lots, I really don't think you need that in the subdivision ordinance. And, uh, on the subdivision exceptions, I'd like to, for y'all to put back in the single cuts, the large lot, and the family divisions for as exceptions to subdivisions. On the private streets, I don't see where you need to have an access management plan on a private road subdivision. Access management plan was directly only for Route 60 and another road. So I don't think you have anything to say about private roads, to have access management on a private road. And, uh, and the large lots, like, for those, definitely be exempt from the subdivision orders. According to new ordinance, I just cut off a 30-acre lot for Kenneth Moore to sell off his two barns for his cattle and for guys to raise some more cattle on it. On the new ordinance, I got to do a wetland study and a soil analysis on the whole 30 acres for him to cut it off, to sell it to a guy out there to raise cattle on it. I don't think you should do that for a large lot. That's some of my concerns, and appreciate y'all looking into it. Thank y'all.
Mr. Coford, just so I can, uh, so utilities on large lots, flag lots, family exemption, trash receptacles, access management plan on private roads, large lot roads, wetland studies, et cetera.
Yeah, just take your large lots and leave them as an exception from the subdivision orders.
Okay.
You said a large lot, it seems was doing a two-acre lot subdivision with 1,000 lots.
Which was on page 127 of our existing ordinances, correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Coford.
Doug Bradbury, 3575 Richestron, Palatine, uh, board members, county administrator, attorney. Good evening. Uh, are y'all having trouble hearing? I was in the back, I, I, all I could hear was sort of a overtone, I couldn't really hear very well back there. Can y'all hear all right? Okay. I didn't know if, so, you know, maybe it's the air conditioner is overriding the speaker, but I know.
Mr. Chairman, we've had this mentioned to us before, so I, I would suggest anybody that has a difficulty hearing us, please let us know, because this has happened before, you know, because people couldn't hear us. So, Mr. Bradbury, if you, if you experience that in the future, give us a shout.
Well, nothing personal, I have trouble hearing TV, and I can't understand anything you say hardly, so I think that's the nature of the dialogue that's occurring in our society.
I think the proclamation we had was about for older Americans, all of us sitting, all of us sitting up here, and some of us sitting out there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm still a little bit upset about that. I'm motioning Mr. Tucker to let me come down and stand to receive the award, and I get no recognition whatsoever. So Doug, if you can meet with me and Mr. Tucker after the meeting, we're getting straight.
Mr. Bradbury, thanks for saying something, we'll make sure we lean into the mic, and please, if you would, lean into the mic, so.
Okay.
I am glad the air conditioning is a little warm up here, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, we, we got onto this subject, I think, back in February, it was one lengthy night in a room down at Hall, it was a late, late one evening, and I think we tried to cover entirely too many items in too short a period, so in turn, uh, wrote y'all a think a fairly lengthy letter expressing my concerns. I did hear a response back from one of your board members, and for that, I thank you. I don't know if there's been any significant changes to, to the things that we had discussed before, uh, and to the things that we had pointed out, if so, uh, that's, that's well and good. I left there that night with the impression that we were going to have some workshops to address some of these issues or the concerns that we shed, that we, uh, expressed that night. To my knowledge, we still are, are waiting to have these workshops, and I think we need to do that sort of stuff. Uh, and I don't want to belabor this thing, because my concerns are the same basically when I sent you any letter, and you have those, and you had, and I know March had listed all of these concerns, it was, you know, rather long laundry list of them, so there's no need to belabor those, you know what they are. But the other thing I would encourage you as a board to do, if there's some specific concerns that, that you have as a board or individual, whether, whether they're private roads, individual access, single cuts, whatever they are, I would, you know, really encourage you to, to try to address them, uh, on, maybe on a piecemeal basis, one by one item. It's pretty difficult to review a hundred-page document, especially when prints and copies are not available at the county. We have to pull this off of the internet. Uh, I'm sort of a poor reader anyway, and to try to read, uh, something off of the internet, I'm totally confused at that point, so, you know, and I'm not in, too, too strongly in favor of my printed chunk of that 100-page document to read, but whenever I read these ordinance, I have to have various sticky notes on one page referencing back and forth, and it's very, very difficult to read this on the internet, and unfortunately, copies are not readily available, and I understand cost is always an issue and timing. But at any rate, I think we've got a lot of concerns on this, I hope that you will table this until these issues are resolved, and I think there are real sincere concerns by us who participate in these ordinances and have to use them as their working documents. And I think our real obligation is to our clients and to the citizens of the county, uh, I, I think there are lots and lots of folks out here that this document is going to affect, and, and tonight, they have absolutely no knowledge of it. Recently had a gentleman ask me, uh, how much acreage he needed in order to give his son or grandson some parcels. I'm not sure I can even answer any of those questions, and I've noticed through the last month or so as I chat with staff members, they find themselves in a very awkward position to answer questions also. So at any rate, I would encourage you to defer adopting this, our, this particular document. There are a lot of conflicts in it that need to be resolved, uh, before you adopt it. So again, thank you for your time, and I thank y'all for all of the work that you do for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Bradbury.
Mr. Chairman? I would just like to support part of what Mr. Bradbury just said, and that is, um, we've been focusing, and rightly so, on the budget, um, pretty much, not solely, but that's been the, the center of our attention for quite some time, quite some weeks now. And, uh, he's right, this, the subdivision ordinance, zoning laws, um, probably second only to the budget, affect the lives of our citizens, and I would rather take a go slower and get it right approach, uh, instead of just rubber stamping something as it comes along. So I guess all I'm saying is, I would be in favor of, of a workshop, or I'd be in favor of, um, having documents ready for people, as he just suggested, uh, anything to make this process more easily understood by the general public, by those of us that have to make these decisions, and by the people that have to manage the program.
Thank you, Ms. Norvig.
Good evening, I'm David Sowers, 2000 Norwood Creek Drive, Palatine. First off, I want to say thank you to the staff for letting me rant and rave and be a general bother to them, and at times I owe them apology for that, but in any case, the subdivision ordinance is a document that takes, or any ordinance, it takes so much time for somebody to put together, and I'm not here to pick something. For somebody to create, uh, any kind of document, it's a lot of work in it, and I'm not here to be picking their work, I just want a good document to work with so that the staff can work with it, the citizens can work with it, the business people can work with it, and it's as smooth as it can be, and also, uh, meet all the ordinances that we have to comply with. A poor plan requires more administration and offers frustration for everybody, including the staff and the business folks. You know, we don't have to pass something just because we've been working on it for a long time. You know, we have opportunity to create this or correct this document that we have and update it to whatever the ordinances we need to, excuse me, comply with. You know, it appears that this document has many errors, and it would be difficult to work with. Some of these, I pointed out to the staff, you know, as an example, in the ordinance itself, there's reference to large lot developments, but by definition, there is no large lot development. there is a definition that defines large lot subdivisions as being 10 acres or more. There's another definition that defines subdivisions as any subdivision with less than 10 acres. So is a large lot subdivision a subdivision, or is it not a subdivision? If it's not a subdivision, is it subject to this ordinance? Well, apparently that it is, because there's a whole section on large lot subdivisions. But those are the kinds of things that are just examples that make things confusing and is difficult to work with. And because of that, there's, excuse me, there are other conflicts in there, but also, it's just hard to deal with, with those sort of things. You know, we don't need to run to the county attorney every time there's one of these word conflicts, there're going to be those things, but these are the obvious ones. And there are other things, for instance, the preliminary plan expires in three years versus five years by law. Mr. Altman pointed out that there's a provision in state law that unless you submit a plat within one year, or, or a period at which the board can, uh, and if I say this right, can extend that time, why wouldn't we extend that time to five years? So your preliminary plan lasts five years, and if you've got five years to submit a plat, the staff doesn't have to look at it every year, and it just, uh, and it takes a long time to develop a plan after, even after a preliminary plan is approved. Another issue that bothers me is the existing ordinance, uh, and the new ordinance provide for bonding, and I sent a note there to Mr., uh, I think Mr. Williams and maybe that, uh, Mr. Altman has it also, that under certain circumstances, it could be that you have, you have required a bonding amount of over 1,000 percent. And having talked to Mr. Altman today, it could even be higher than that. And those things are crazy. You know, we compared things to Chesterfield County, and we all sit up here and say, we don't want to be Chesterfield County, but every time something happens, we run to Chesterfield County and say, oh, look what they did. But we ought to be comparing ourselves, in this, this case, maybe to Gooseland County. We sort of, I guess economically, compete with them a little bit. They don't have this in their ordinance. They have other ways of handling it. you know, uh, one other thing here that the previous speakers have said, you know, we got to look at those folks, they're the engineers in the county, they're the ones standing to make more money by this new ordinance. And the reason they make money is time. They sell their time, it takes them more time, the more time it does take them to produce something, the more it costs a citizen, of course, the more money they make. But they're not here saying, uh, yeah, we like this ordinance because we want to make more money, they're telling you that a lot of things are wrong, so therefore, this ordinance ought not be passed. You know, the more complicated it is, it's the more time it takes, the more money it takes, the more staff it takes. Another question I have is, do we need a new ordinance? If we look at the checklist that Mr. Altman or the staff put out, and you take out the large lot developments, and you take out the new provisions for the, um, conservation subdivisions, they're almost identical of what we have today and versus what we're proposing. So why do we want to come up with a new ordinance when we already accomplishing everything we want to do with the old ordinance? Why don't we just bring in the new provisions to the old ordinance where everybody understands it? We can tweak the old ordinance better, everybody knows it, and, uh, it seems like it'd be easier to me. Now, I don't know whether that's possible, I don't know what the problems are, but it I guess in summary, if you hadn't already figured it out, I'm somewhat opposed to the ordinance. I am, uh, I guess at best, this needs to be deferred, or at best, it needs to be reworked, uh, worst case, it needs to be deferred. I don't really see any reason why, another thing, why we want to enact an ordinance when the Planning Commission is already working on trying, so I hear, trying to fix it before we enact it. Um, anyway, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate you, everybody's work on it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sowers. Anyone else wishing to speak? Now I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Williams, did you have a motion that you wanted to possibly make? I know you spoke briefly about, uh, making sure that we heard the private road discussion from the Planning Commission before we start, Tom.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion that we defer taking any action on the subdivision ordinance, uh, tonight. I recommend that we change the order in which the subdivision is up for action on our next meeting workshop, which is on the 18th. Instead of taking action, I'm going to recommend that we listen to the Planning Commission, take into account whether or not we want large lot development in this county or something else. Then I would like to see us have the discussion of the 50 items that are in the matrix that has been presented to us, to go through them, to give staff the guidance going forward as to what it is that we want in this subdivision ordinance. So my motion is basically that, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments?
You look like you need, you were going to say something, I'm seeing you moist your lips over.
Comments?
It sounded like about 12 pieces to that motion.
Okay, let me, let me be succinct.
Please do.
All right?
Defer.
Defer is number one.
Gotcha.
Secondly, change the order in which we will be addressing the subdivision ordinance at the, at the workshop on the 18th. And three, defer taking action on the 18th, but instead use it as a discussion, going through the 50 items that are in the current matrix as questions to be addressed by the board.
I got it.
Mr. Hodges, still second on that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's clear, I think what he's doing is, one, deferring it to discuss.
Yes.
And then, this, if, if it's a combined or, uh, compound motion, then the second part is obviously change the order in which we do that, when, before we discuss, address...
Have the problem.
Exactly, address the private road issue, because it's the Planning Commission is addressing that, and as we've heard tonight, I think, I think March is right, I agree with David, he's made a good summary of these major issues we have to address on this, and so I think the order would be tackle that as a board, uh, from a policy level and decide what we're doing with it, and then once we've done that, then you can step over and then go through, some of these comments actually may go away, depend on that decision, some may not go away, and some may still stay, because a lot of them do relate to this issue, as Mr. Sowers said, what's a large lot development? And it's related to this issue also, private roads, because it's tied, we know, development isn't in a box by itself, it's all interrelated. So I think if we did that, it might help us, maybe even the citizens and the stakeholders, to flip it and narrow the issue in a funnel-like pattern, rather than trying to go through everything at once and then realize we make some decision and, well, we really didn't need to do that. So I, I agree with the motion, um, at least on those points, if I've summarized correctly, Mr. Williams, I think that's it.
So it was a motion to the 18th specifically?
Yes.
And a friendly, a friendly addition to your motion?
I know.
And that's all we try to cover on the 18th?
I was going to make that as a comment, that, you know, the agenda that we have on the 18th is huge, and, you know, going back to our experiences, as I said earlier, just with the issue of private roads, you couple that with the subdivision ordinance, that's a, that's two major topics that are, that's going to consume a great deal of time.
But Ms. Wyler has a problem.
We, staff would ask that you allow us to put items on the 18th that may not take a lot of time, we've already had you defer an action of a couple of items to the 18th, so allow us that flexibility, don't say there'll be no other items on the 18th, allow us the flexibility to.
I would allow.
Pair down that agenda so that we don't have any other major discussion items.
David, you'll give me withdrawing my friendly in motion amendment?
Absolutely, and you can work with the chairman.
That's what I like. That's what I like.
Y'all can work that out.
So, I'll make sure the meeting's not over six hours. Just joking, Mr. Williams.
Y'all just did the old person resolution.
I'm catching up to you. So, anyway, I have a couple of comments. I agree with Mr. Sowers that a poor plan does create frustration. I do not want anyone in the, in the audience to think that we are in a hurry. However, I do want to make sure that we leave on the 18th going through the matrix that we have, that Mr. Altman put together so diligently, that kind of brings it all in a nutshell. Mr. Kofor, I am not in support of trash receptacles, I can assure you that. So, that's a moot point. We can let that one go. But there's some other things, I think, that are, that are, we do need to have dialogue. I don't want to get wrapped up in the small things. I'm not too sure that we can't take those 50 items and, and go through them pretty quickly in some of the easy layups, and then really roll our sleeves up on the, on the big issues. But I, I do want to leave, for staff to leave there on the 18th with a clear understanding of what we're looking to accomplish so that we can accomplish these. To Mr. Sowers' question, do we need an ordinance, do we need a new ordinance? I think we're too far along in the process to go backwards sometimes. But I think we can use some of the old ordinance along with the, with this new, new ordinance and come up with good, a good plan. So, it's simple, clear to understand. Mr. Bradbury, thank you for your emails you sent. We all have read them. If you need a copy of anything, just let me know, I'll make sure you get it. I have a printer at home that I print stuff on. Cartridge is cheap, so I'll make sure you get it. I'm in support of the motion. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Can we take about a three-minute break here?
Could it be five?
Five minutes? Okay. Five-minute break, please. We'll recess five minutes. Call of 2014, May 2000, excuse me, May 2015, Board Supervisors Meeting, back to order. At this time, we're gonna have action items. The first action item we'll have will be a resolution R. 2015-39 fixing the FY16 real estate tax rate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hodge?
I have a motion with regards to Resolution R. 2015, or R-2015-39, and I would like to present, put that motion on the floor. With that, with respects to that, my motion is to amend Resolution R-2015-39, fixing the fiscal year 2016 real estate tax rate to reduce it to 89 cents. And my policy reasons are basically threefold. One, in a $74 million budget, I believe there's room finally for the taxpayer to get immediate tax relief. Number two, over the last three years, this board plugged a lot of holes in the budget, trying to make us fiscally responsible. In doing so, this board broke a lot of trends from prior boards. One of those trends was to stop using one-time funds to fund operations. Another trend we broke was revenue-neutral moves in the tax rate to balance the budget. Another trend, not all of this board broke, but recently, we divided on, was the issue of a tax increase last year of 2.5 cents to fund capital needs. So, we haven't always been in unison. However, the board has been heading in a certain direction, and that direction has been in the direction of fiscal responsibility. And I wish that the board would stay on that course and continue that path. The third reason is, with respects to the rates, and I know Mr. Williams mentions this many times, and I'm gonna tie this into something that we've been focused on, this board and every other board before us has used the word economic development. Our rate in the area is one of the highest. You name it, we're up there. We're not the lowest, we're not in the middle of the pack, we're out front. And if you know anything about economic policy, and I think there's some in the audience that certainly do here this evening, and Reagan was good to champion this, was, he used to say, "If something moves, it's the way the government views things, you tax it. If it keeps moving, you regulate it. And if it stops moving, you subsidize it." And there's some wisdom in that because we know that economic policy is not really about numbers. If you ask an expert on a witness stand, or you ask an expert anywhere, economics is about human behavior. If you tax something, you discourage it. If you don't tax something, you encourage it. Same thing with a rate. If you increase taxes on something, you are making a conscious decision as a policymaker to discourage that activity. Because remember, it's human behavior is economics. That's why it's impossible to predict the markets. You can't predict people. You can trend, but in the end, no one saw what was coming really, even though some heralded trends of what came in '07. So, I think this board should stay on a course of fiscal responsibility, and one of those issues is this, and that's the undergirding principle this board's talked about in other boards, and that's economic development. We need to be like Ken Ryko, Mr. Williams has said this numerous times. The rate doesn't go up anymore, folks, but it can go down. And I believe in that size of a budget, which is approximately about $290,000, can begin that trend to go back, to repay those taxpayers for the last eight years of an economic downturn where they've been sacked. Families, businesses, the board has been trying to turn the ship and turn it to the right, and that's good, towards the economic policies that would foster real development in the county rather than continuing to look and say, "Look, the only way to solve our problems is to hit the easy button and raise taxes," or to keep spending everything that comes in. Even in our homes, we don't do that, and you can't do that for long. That's a big issue with the Fed. There's not enough savings. We're no longer a nation of savers, we're a nation of spenders. Well, you see where that's gotten us. We've got some real problems. The county doesn't need to emulate that type of thinking. So, for those reasons, my motion is on the floor, and I would hope that my board members would seriously consider those policy reasons and others, that others might share, that we begin to effectively take charge of what's the most important thing, and that is the tax rate, which we control, which, and as I think one of our founders said, "The power to tax is the power to destroy." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Hodge, I just want to talk about some of the finer points here. By lowering the tax rate to 89, and that's your proposal, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. What areas are going to be affected, in your mind?
That is, I am prepared also, and I believe it's already been circulated, if not, I have a motion to amend the fiscal year 2016 budget accordingly.
Mr. Chairman, can we have those discussions together? It seems to make sense to do that because...
Mr. Norvig, I agree. Before I could support an 89-cent tax rate, I want to understand whether the $291,000 is being saved. Furthermore, the most alarming thing to me is, this dialogue should have taken place on the, on the 18th of April, when we, we advertised. To come tonight and receive this information after 5 o'clock today is not transparency. And this board has talked about transparency many, many times. The public heard a 90-cent tax rate, they heard funding in certain buckets, and to come tonight and talk about a lesser tax rate and not give the public a chance to know that that's what's, what's gonna be discussed, to me, is alarming. However, we'll, the conversation will take place, but before I can support an 89-cent tax rate, I'd need to understand where the monies are coming from.
Mr. Chairman, you say this is alarming and not transparent. I couldn't disagree more. We're having the public meeting. Now, if you notice what happened in Chesterfield not that long ago in their budget, they had a discussion as well, where Mr. Gekker came in, and at the public meeting, he suggested lowering the tax rate. And they did, ultimately did. They went from what the chairman had recommended, what was out there, 98 cents, they went back down to 96 cents. So, it's nothing nefarious or unusual about a public meeting. I came to a public meeting, you know, with the fire chief and the ordinance, last, last meeting. Some members of the board had prepared statements. I didn't know about those, but I understood that that's the way our process worked. Everybody has a chance to speak. Now, as far as this thing about coming to the meeting with prepared information, again, that's something, that's routine, that happens all the time. I'll say something else. Seems like we've been getting information almost every other day as we've gone through this budget process. And if you think it's easy to assimilate all this information in one setting, it's not. Trust me, I've learned a ton. Each meeting I've gone to, for example, with the Capital Improvement Plan, I've learned one more thing, two more things that I wouldn't have known otherwise. Make no mistake, when you're putting together a budget, you have to have all the pieces, not just part of the information, but all the information. And it takes time to assimilate that information and come forward with what I'm tasked for, and that's coming forward with a budget proposal. After talking with my constituents, the people in my district, that's my job, to get their input, to represent them on this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's, I guess, a procedural issue on the floor, and Tom, I guess the only question I have was...
You can only take up one issue at a time pursuant to Robert's rules, so what I would recommend you do is simply shift the order of the two discussions and move Agenda Item B to A, just amend your agenda, and then have a discussion on the budget first.
Right.
So that you can, if they make a determination whether you can fund the tax rate, I mean, if you, because if you get, right now, the, subject A is the tax rate, you need to vote on that first unless you move that behind the budget to have that discussion. Because pursuant to Robert's rules, you technically can't take up both, both items at the same time.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Tom, are you saying there's two issues? One, obviously, is, is changing the order. The other issue, I think I heard the issue of merging them. I don't know if we can do that. What is your opinion?
No, I don't, I don't believe they can be merged. No, I think they need to be addressed one at a time, and what I'm hearing, probably the appropriate order would be to have at least the discussion on the budget first. And you can actually defer action. You could say, "We're gonna have the discussion on the budget first, we'll defer action on the budget, then we'll go back to the tax rate." And I mean, you can, you can break it into smaller pieces if you'd like to, but you need to take up one issue at a time.
I have a question. So, we adopted the budget, I mean, adopted the agenda, so we're now not following the adopted agenda, we're gonna amend the adopted agenda?
Well, and if everybody's in agreement, you don't actually have to formally amend it. You know, if nobody calls for the orders of the day, which is a requirement, we go back to the agenda. If everybody just kind of, by consensus says, "We'll discuss the budget first," you don't actually have to go through the formal amendment unless someone insists upon it.
So, this is not a motion? Technically, it's a suggestion?
I, I'm saying if, if the board by consensus decides we want to discuss the budget first, and everybody's in agreement with that, you can do that.
I'd like to discuss the budget first, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Will we do both the motion that's already been seconded?
Well, you just withdraw the motion. You just say, "Okay, we're gonna temporarily take the motion off the table," or defer the motion while we take up this issue. And technically, what it would be, just table that motion. Normally, what tabling is, is you're deferring an action to later in the meeting, and so you just table that motion, take up the budget, and then come back to the motion.
Tom, the motion stays pending, though, correct?
If you table it, if somebody made a motion to table your motion, then it would stay pending, and then you take it back off the table when you're ready to discuss it some more. That's what tabling technically is. To table a motion is to say, "We're taking an existing motion, and we're gonna move it to later on, and then take it back off the table when we're ready to move on it."
But it does need a motion, a second, to bring it back off on the table, does it?
Yes. What you would have is you, to pull it back off the table, you'd have a motion, and to bring it back off the table, yes.
Hold on a second. Let me get clarity then on that. So, what you're saying is if you vote, there has to be a vote to table it?
Right.
Correct. Then there has to be a vote to bring it off that table and, and bring it up again for actually discussion and a call to question. Am I right?
Correct.
In other words, a vote to table it and a vote to bring it back out?
Correct.
Both?
Correct.
Okay.
And if it, if it isn't brought off the table, then there is no motion, and then you could make the motion again. Because if it isn't...
I see what you're saying. With, with, you're, I understand.
If it isn't pulled off the table, then the motion's gone. Tabling a motion that isn't brought back off the table eliminates the motion.
Right. Okay. All right.
Or we could have voted, or we could just vote on the motion that's been put on us for 89 cents.
That's true.
Correct?
You can do that, of course.
Mr. Norvig, you, you had a motion, I guess?
I motioned that we table it since it can be brought back so that we can have a discussion about how the 89-cent tax rate affects the line items in the budget. And that would mean that we would discuss Resolution R. 2015-38, the operating budget for fiscal year 2016 first.
So, you're just moving the move A and B, switching A and B?
Correct. Action items A and B, I'd like to invert those for discussion purposes.
Enough to do that. What he's saying is tabling the motion, the next issue comes up.
Right.
So, by tabling it, that brings the next, next issue on the list up, and then after you do that issue, taking it off the table, we come back, insert it back in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll second this motion by Mr. Norvig.
A motion on the floor to table, the motion to adopt an 89-cent tax rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We now move on to item 11B, B, 10B ordinance, excuse me, I apologize, 11B, Resolution R. 2015-38, adoption of the operating budget for FY16 and appropriation of funds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hodge.
Since the question was asked, I will proceed forward then to elaborate. I move to approve Resolution R-2015-38 with the following changes. To estimated revenues, reduce general fund property taxes by $291,000, $285, for a total of $34,925, $655. Reduce total general fund by $291,000, $285, for a total of $47,208,155. Reduce school operating fund transfers from the general fund by $402,163, for a total of $21,677,390. Reduce total, excuse me, reduce total estimated revenue and transfers by $693,448,000, for a total of $99,196,946. Reduce transfers to school operating fund by $402,163, for a total of $21,877,390. Reduce total transfers to other funds by $402,163, for a total of $25,276,968. Reduced estimated revenues, total estimated revenues without transfers by $291,285, for a total of $73,919,780. To expenditures, increase general fund expenditures by $110,878, for a total of $22,737,460. Reduce general fund transfers to other funds by $402,163,000, for a total of $25,134,409. Reduce total general fund expenditures and transfers by $291,285, for a total of $47,208,155. Reduce school operating fund expenditures and transfers by $402,163, for a total of Reduce total expenditures and transfers by $693,448,000, for a total of $99,196,946. Reduce transfers to other funds by $402,163, for a total of $25,276,968. Reduce total expenditures without transfers by $291,291,285. transfers by $291,285, for a total of $73,919,978. To general fund expenditures, line items, reduce salary contingency for implementation of the classification and classification study by $249,168. Reduce salary contingency for all proposed position changes except the two dispatchers by $121,580. Reduce contributions to nonprofits by $31,500. Reduce extension service for the family and consumer services, FCS, program by $22,400. And increase transfers to fund balance capital maintenance reserve by a total of $535,526, for a total increase to general fund expenditures of $110,878. And reduce transfers to the school operating fund by $402,163, for a total reduction of general fund expenditures and transfers of $291,285. That is my motion, Mr. Chairman, on the floor.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Comments or questions? I have a couple of questions, Mr. Hodge.
Uh huh.
Of the 402, 163 to the schools, that's basically consisting of what?
That is comprised of, and of course, the schools-
First of all, and I will say this, Mr. Williams, because I know where you're going. The schools get their funds, they choose where to put them. But you came up with a figure from a spreadsheet they provided to us. So do you have an idea of how they could reduce that if they choose to do so?
Yes, sir. That's very straightforward. I certainly can give you that answer. Not a problem at all. Those two numbers are derived from the new school positions of approximately $114,000, and of course, the 249, excuse me, the 287,000 for the 1.5 percent salary increase.
So you're not supporting the salary increase that they chose to address the gap that we all have said we basically saw?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying you're going to eliminate the three positions that they added, even though they showed that the net gain was $11,000, because there was a $103,000 or $104,000 savings with the job, with a position elimination?
Yes, and they certainly have the discretion to decide what they can do with the additional increase. We're still giving them.
Thank you.
Of over $400,000. Yes.
So the positions you're eliminating in the $31,000 for the elderly care program, nonprofit, that would be to the, to some clear, would have been to, excuse me, here, give me a minute, would have been to Senior Connections, YMCA, Feed More, Senior Navigation, Free Clinic. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm going to actually read for the public from the budget book. Those contributions are to Senior Connections of $10,000. They are to the YMCA for $7,000. They are to Senior Navigator for $10,000. They are to the-
Feed More.
And then the, exactly, the Senior Navigator. And then it is to the Free Clinic for $2,000. That is correct.
Thank you. And then the funding positions you're talking about, you're funding two dispatchers-
Correct.
But you're eliminating the increase in the part-time fire chief from .25 to .50. You're not in support of the utilities director position, nor are you in support of the EMS support person and the fire marshal position?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the last question I have, so the maintenance reserve, the transfer of $535,000, $526,000, the purpose of that is what?
The purpose of that is straightforward. Every budget has a theme. If there's one thing that's emerged from this budget, it's crystal clear, that we can fund our capital needs without a tax increase. Lo and behold, we started this journey, as Mr. Williams says, with an 11 cent proposed hike in the tax rate to cover our capital needs. After a series of meetings with the school board, which were extremely productive, they were professional, we actually got to the point, working together, that we got to the point where we had scenarios where there wouldn't need to be a tax increase to fund our capital needs. Now, I would have never thought that was possible until we had a series of meetings with the school board, and we had discussions on those items to work through every single one of those issues. Now, none of those were clear at first, but as we worked through them, they did become clear. And one thing that was crystal clear was, we realized in that whole discussion after a long time, when this board thought, we kind of thought that that was necessary, we found out that really isn't necessary. But what we have to do is we have to do something very important to avoid that. There's always a catch to everything, and there's a catch to this, too. You have to fund your capital needs now. You have to fund and start funding them now. You can't do like the prior boards, and I've said this, and I'll say it again. Kicking the can includes to future generations. You don't do that. You shouldn't do it in Washington. You shouldn't do it at the state level, and you shouldn't do it at the county level. The buck stops here, and what we do is, like anyone else in their business budget or their family budget, if you know you have a capital need, you need a new roof on your house, you need new windows and siding. Do you start to plan for that now, and look at how ways you can cut your own budget to save, to come up either with the down, or perhaps actually work it out so that your budget can absorb it without you having to find a second job, or a third job, or sending your wife off to work? The smartest thing is to what? Start saving now and putting that money to those capital needs we've heard so often about over the last four years and previously. I mean, the bus garage's been on there for, what, 30 years? So if these are capital needs we need to address, we need to do it without a tax increase, and we found out, lo and behold, we can do that. So what this is, is exactly doing that. We funded two 2 percent raises in the last two years. I don't believe any other jurisdiction did that, back to back in a row, after the toughest budget this county has ever faced. Memories are short. We came in with a $2 million deficit from fiscal year 2012. We had a fiscal year deficit for 2013 of $8 million, for a combined total of $10 million. I think that's the worst budget historically this county has ever faced, since Reconstruction and perhaps before. So, the bottom line is this. We have to be prudent on what we do, and don't make the mistakes that previously were made, where the county believed that you could fund everything through bond issuance and debt capacity and eat it up. No. We found out through the series of meetings with the school board, we don't need to do that. We've got options. We can look at the radio system that we need for our first responders and begin to address that. We can look at the schools' needs and work through that. But we have to begin to put money immediately aside, more than even is proposed in the current budget, so that we can begin to do that. If we don't do that, the alternative then is to merely, once again, kick the can down the road, hope for greener times, brighter pastures, and that somehow it will be funded some way in the future, some other way. I don't believe that's the right policy, and it got us into trouble before. We need to avoid that and turn the ship away from that. Fund our needs now and start funding them now with a save-as-you-go and pay-as-you-go plan. And we can do that. Those scenarios were in there. Didn't know that before. It's great. Those things came to light recently, and all the more reason for the motions that are on the floor now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Mr. Williams, any comment?
You look perplexed, you know.
No, I'm not perplexed at all.
Well, you had a question, I believe, where you-
The question was, we, Mr. Hodge eloquently said it, we can fund our CIP needs with no tax increase. We saw that.
No, I'm talking about the capital maintenance reserve.
Capital maintenance, Ms. Waller, I think we have $2.9 million in our capital maintenance reserve right now? We will at the end of June?
Yes, that's the estimate for the end of June, $2.9 million.
Okay. And we built our, and we built our 90 cent tax increase conservatively, capturing sales tax revenues, increased building, new construction, and personal property taxes. So it's been conservative.
One of the things I like about this proposed budget is that it moves money for infrastructure, that $535,000, approximately. In my opinion, is the movement that we need to make at this time, we see the schools putting up $650,000 in projected savings. I'm still not 100% sure we're going to get there on those savings, you know, as it pertains to the closing of the middle school and whatever happens to the middle school after it gets closed. The expenses of the adaptive reuse of that building, or simply maintain it like we did the Armory for years, could easily elipse that $650,000 that we're hoping in savings is going to be there. If it's, one thing I've learned the last two budgets is that we've got a huge infrastructure need in this county. The second issue, Carson and Billy, they can tell you, I've said this back on the Plan Commission in 2006, that we would come to the day where we wouldn't have money for needed infrastructure. We wouldn't have the capacity. What we've been able to do since the county administrator presented her proposed CIP with 11 pennies funding the infrastructure needs in this county, we've worked very well with the school board through a series of meetings, and Pat's provided us, as we have tasked her with looking at other scenarios for coming up with the money, we've been able to begin to see daylight on how we're going to do this without raising the tax rate in this county to what I consider an unacceptable level. Any additional tax increases, rate increases, in my opinion, when you're at 90 cents and you're the third highest of the nine jurisdictions in the Richmond Regional Plan District Commission, that's alarming. School board member was quoted in Palatine today just recently, where he said, "People can't afford to live in this county." And what he was talking about was the fact that we have good schools in the county, they're not full at present, but he was trying to make the case for allowing people outside of the jurisdiction to attend Palatine County schools. But he said something that's very true. People can't afford to live in this county, and I can tell you right now, you raise the tax rate anymore, and it's going to have a negative effect, not only on economic development, but it's going to have an effect on people coming here, and it's going to have an effect on people staying here. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Couple, couple comments. Many times we mention economic development. I'm not sure, and several of us, some of us have mentioned Henraco County. When Henraco County went through the real estate boom, Mr. Hodge mentioned that. I went back and researched, they did not lower their tax rate when they had the huge increases neither. So, you know, therefore, they weren't revenue neutral. They were capturing all that additional revenue with the tax rate being the same when they had the huge real estate boom. So I'm not sure they were the greatest. I know this previous board did lower down to 74, and this board did go to 90 cents, which was one cent less than revenue neutral. So we, I guess we're applauding ourselves for that. If we lower the tax rate, and I do understand people's finances are tight, we lower the tax rate by one penny on a $300,000 home, it's $30. I cannot kick the can any further down the road, as Mr. Hodge says, when we have a glaring need in our schools to fix the gap. We have a study that was paid for and done by this county to implement a paying classification study that says we need to fix that. To me, not doing that is kicking the can, no different than some of the things Mr. Hodge talks about not kicking the can on. So, you know, I am not in support of the motion as it's presented. I will have a counter to that motion. I would like to put the 402,000, 163 back in for the schools. I would like to add the paying classification study funding of 249, 168 back in. I would propose that we fully fund the entire positions that are in the budget to include the fire marshal, part-time fire chiefs from .25 to .0, the EMS support, utilities director. I would also like to, as much as it pains me, I will not add in the $31,000 for the nonprofit for the elderly, although I do think that's a service that we are missing. However, at this time, I will not support that. I will add in, back into the budget, the 22,400 for the FFC position, part-time position.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. First off, I want to-
Ma'am, a point of clarification. I'm sorry, Carson. Was that a motion, Bill?
Yes, it is a motion. Amend the motion that y'all presented.
Mr. Chairman, I have a procedural question. I think the first motion has been not only moved and seconded, if I'm correct.
It has.
It has, which means-
He has a motion to amend. He needs a second, but if he has a, right now, there's a motion to amend out there with no second.
Second, correct.
I'll second it.
Is it, does the first one get called on the question, the, okay. All right.
You can, you can make amendments two layers deep. So that's the first layer of amendment.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder for everybody to speak into the microphone so that people out there can hear a little more easily.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker?
First off, kudos for the work that somebody put into this. It's appreciated much. And I'm particularly impressed by your effort to improve the capital maintenance reserve, because I believe that you're absolutely right. The time has come to bite the bullet and do what has to be done. I, like Mr. Melton, am concerned that I didn't get this until I got here at 7 o'clock. So literally, I'm here struggling with answering the question for myself, what is the impact of each one of these general fund line item reductions? All I've got is a line that says, reduce it by 249,000, et cetera, reduce it by 121,000, et cetera, reduce it by whatever. I'm optimistic that we could have worked out something had we had this opportunity to do this a week ago, two weeks ago, 10 days ago, five days ago, three days ago. But you're asking me to jettison everything that we've been working on for the last weeks, that the county administrator has presented to us, that we whipped up on, that the school board has worked so hard to meet us halfway. Part of me is reacting emotionally right now, having this thing delivered at the final minute of the meeting, and you're asking me to basically abandon things that I thought we had worked through over the course of the last weeks. So I wish that we had had an opportunity, I'm beating a dead horse, to have seen this and had this discussion that we're having right now before tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
There's no reason that you can't have the time to look at it. I don't know of anything that, if you want to defer it, defer action on it?
But by state law, you must adopt this budget by May 1, and we did, were granted an extension by the school district to May 4, which is your first meeting after-
Let me be clear. I didn't think it was a state requirement. Is it something to write to the schools in terms of funding them?
It is, it is a state law, sir. It is in the education section of the Virginia Code. You must adopt the budget by May 1, or within 15 days after the adoption of, of the state adoption of their budget, whichever comes later. And May 1 is it in this case.
Because we've had discussions before about adopting the budget later on, and the only tripwire that, when we discussed this, was about when do the schools need to have their money so that they could go forward with contracts?
Correct. You did have that discussion last year, and that was because the state legislators did not adopt their budget. And because they delayed the adoption of their budget, that delayed that May 1 trigger. But this year, the state legislators adopted their budget, and it is the May 1 trigger. It is in the education section of the state code.
So today is May 4?
Correct.
But I thought you said it was a May 1 trigger.
That's correct.
So we're late?
Correct.
Well, how did that happen?
Because at the time, when the board asked to reschedule the public hearing, we did consult with the school board and said, we can't, we don't have a meeting by before May 1, may we do it on May 4. So I understand we're not allowed to get the authorization from them, but we did work through our school district and this, to ask them if they would be okay with May 4 instead of May 1.
So this sounds like more of a school issue than a state issue.
It is a state law, though.
I got a question. I got a question. Very important question, Mr. Chairman. Tom, I got a question. Here's the- Here's the question. It's May 4th. What does state law say? Regardless of the motions on the floor at this time, and the discussions that we've had, where are we at?
Well, I'm not sure on the school budget. State law, and I'm not sure, I didn't realize this was going to be an issue, the reconciliation of it-
In 15-2, it says we have to adopt it by June 30th. You have to go to the education section of the law.
Right, and that's what I was trying to pull up, the education, because I know 15-2 says we have to do by the beginning of the fiscal year.
Right, by July 4th. You have to go to the education section of the state law.
And that's what I was just trying to find, the education part, because I know the 15-2 says we have to just do it by the beginning of the-
Correct.
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding with prior years, is that's why we worked the issue with regards to the contracts.
So what I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think what Barry's question is-
Yeah, I see the section that the, I'm sorry, that the county administrator referenced here, it's 22.193. It says the governing body of the county should prepare and approve an annual budget for educational purposes by May 1st, or 30 days after the receipt of the county estimates of state funds. And so, reading this, and I haven't researched it, but it seems to me you have to approve the school portion of the budget. You theoretically defer the rest of the budget.
That's not what I was hearing, though. What Pat was saying, that it was a state requirement, and, you know, we-
It's a state requirement that you approve the schools' part of the budget.
Okay. So we could send over the school part, pass a school budget, part of this budget. Is that correct?
That's what I'm reading right here. Yes.
Okay, well, let's-
Mr. Chairman, I still have a question. My question still stands, Tom. It's passed May 1st.
Well, there's no penalty provision. Theoretically, the schools could file a petition with the court ordering us to approve the budget, or actually, what they do, I think they file it with the Attorney General, and the Attorney General asks the court to order us to prepare the budget. In the real world, that doesn't happen four days out. There's no penalty provision in the code if we're three or four days late.
Okay, so let me ask the follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tom. The follow-up question is, if that's the consequence, and of course, this board, let me ask you this follow-up question, that is, deferral, Tom. We've had advertisement and public hearing on it, and of course, this board has the power to set a meeting as it chooses under its bylaws, if I'm correct, whether that be, as long as it's advertised and noticed. So the question, Tom, is, would that apply in this case as well? In other words, state law, if you deferred action on it, it has been advertised per the code, and advertised, the board just has not taken action upon it, and it deferred it to a subsequent date. Maybe that's three days, maybe that's one week, but it's some short period of time, perhaps.
No, 22.193 says that the governing body shall approve by May 1st. So there's no provision in here technically for deferral. We're already technically not in compliance with the law, and so there's no, I cannot advise that we have some sort of authority or right to defer it, because we don't, on the school board, the school budget part.
But technically, we're already late?
Yes.
Technically, we're already late.
Okay. For the school portion?
Well, and my understanding from the county administrator, the schools have acquiesced to the delay to today.
That's correct.
And they would be the group that would have the right to complain, and if the school has acquiesced, then the group that would have the right to complain has said they're okay with us doing it today.
So, we're talking about the 402,163, that the motion recommends reducing transfers to the schools. I would have liked to have had, I'll say it again, that conversation with the schools to let them know that we're reducing their budget, or considering reducing their budget by another $402,000, and see what they had to say about that.
Mr. Tucker, I agree, but I also think the people, the parents or the students, the teachers, all needed to hear that, not just the school board.
Agreed.
We didn't give the people a chance to hear that we're going to take away the funding of $287,000 and the three positions. We came tonight to do that, without them knowing. Some of the people in the audience may have known that, but the majority of the citizens did not.
So what are our options at this point? Our options are to vote on the 89, up or down, to vote on the budget as presented, 90.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm just trying to get through it. What are all the options? Are there any other options that we have?
Would you repeat your options again as you see them?
We can vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Correct.
We can vote on the motion to go to the proposed 90 cents, or we can make a new motion and say we're going to not approve anything except the 402,163 to the schools. That's the third option.
Will that be part of the school's budget?
Right.
Yeah, you'd have to adopt the entire school budget, whatever you wanted that to be. That would be your third option.
Minus the 402. Whatever, what was in that?
Whatever you wanted the school budget to be, you would have to adopt it.
Those are the three options on the table. Are there any other procedural operations, Ms. Wyler or Mr. Lachey?
Mr. Tucker, just for clarification, so if we did the school portion tonight, then you'd be deferring the rest of the operating budget to-
Correct. That's the third option.
A later date, and that date would be?
Four weeks?
No, that's the fourth option.
Oh, the fourth option.
Or, you could do, as Mr. Hodge has kind of discussed, take your chances, defer, see what happens.
Question, one more follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. One question we didn't ask.
See if AG gets a call?
Yeah, I would not recommend that option.
Mr. Chairman, one question for Tom.
Mr. Hodge was hitting around too.
It might help clarify what Mr. Tucker's trying to get hold of. Tom, with regards to the real estate tax rate timeline, restrictions, consequences, can you give us a quick summary on that on the legal side? I don't think there're-
By deferring the-
Because there's, yeah, the issues that Mr. Tucker raised, trying to summarize them, we hadn't asked that question.
I think the tax rate deferral just affects the preparation of bills and all of those issues.
You changed your real estate tax year to a fiscal year, so the first bills that will be issued for this tax rate are in November. The law does say, though, that in 15-2, it does say you must adopt a budget by June 30th and a tax rate to support that budget. So you can adopt a school budget tonight, and you don't have to take action on the county budget until June 30th, or the tax rate until June 30th.
Well, and there's nothing, and I'm not commenting one way or the other on which way you should go, but there's nothing that prevents you from adopting a school budget that you subsequently provide them additional money if you want. I'm not suggesting that's the course of action to take. I have no opinion on any of that. I'm just saying you could theoretically.
My question was merely a legal question, but I appreciate that, Tom. And Ms. Wyler, I appreciate your comment, lets us know what our scope is. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, so I'm just trying to get to where, what our options are again. It sounds as if we could vote on the school budget tonight, either fully funded or minus the $402,000.
Or something in between?
Or something in between.
Correct.
But what would you base that on?
A motion.
We'll just ask that some rationale behind the motion.
I understand that.
So was I right in that, Tom, that we could do either one of those two?
Well, you have all kinds of options. Those are options.
Well, I don't want to make the field too big of options that we'll be here till tomorrow morning, but the two on the table right now, the ones that I'm considering, are fund the schools fully at what we had in the original 90 cent budget, or fund them at minus 402,163, or to David's point, something in between. If we, I don't know why we would do something in between.
You would.
Okay, so there's two options on the table here, or two more options on the table.
Well, again, you can keep in the back of your mind what Tom said. There's nothing prevents you if you said, "Okay, we're not going to do the 402." But then later on, you could take another action where you could give them an additional amount of money if you chose to.
Like we did last year.
If you chose to, like we did that before.
I hear you, Mr. Williams, but I'll go back to, I really think we should allow, we should allow the school board, courtesy to know, and the people, the citizens that we all say we want to be transparent to, to know what we were thinking. And when we advertise the 90 cent, and the budget, it had the 287 for the salary, and the 114 for the three positions, less the 104 for the reduction of a staff member, I just think that those people, that people don't have a chance to speak. We run two meetings a month to try to have people be able to speak to us, and I know Mr. Williams referenced, he's had some people speak to him, I've had some people speak to me, in support of the budget that was presented and that we voted on on the 18th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when you vote to advertise something, I mean, we have very clear guidelines. Whatever the tax rate is, can go up. It can always go down. Changes can occur within the advertised budget amounts. It happens all the time. And the reason it happens all the time is because we, through our learning process, through discussions, you know, either with other board members, with staff, or with even school board members, you build the book of information that you need to make a final decision. And I'll say again, assimilating all the information that's been presented to us since we started this budget process, I think I shared with some of you before, when I drive into my basement, I have steps that lead to the upstairs dwelling. My steps have turned into a filing system with stacks of paper that I'm taking back from meetings that we've had. We've done something historic in this county that hasn't been done before, and I want to commend this board and the school board. Look at the number of meetings that we've had. When I first proposed at a meeting some months ago that we would have a series of meetings, however many meetings it took to address four topics, the budget, fiscal constraints, the capital improvement plan, and the facilities study. Valerie Ayers was sitting beside me at the last meeting, and she said, you know, as we were getting up, getting ready to go, she said, "This is good. This is good stuff." Because for the first time, we didn't just do the cursory one meeting and try to get the handouts, this is the amount that we need, this is the budget, this is the CIP, and go home. What we've actually done through these series of meetings is address those four topics and try to come to mutual understandings about where we are in this county, what can we realistically do to fund education, what can we realistically do to fund, you know, infrastructure for education and for other county facilities, so that there is this understanding that it isn't just me or they out there. It's this whole thing called Powhatan County Incorporated that we're charged with funding. So it's been a learning curve. It's been a learning process, where you finally get to the point where you do have to make some hard decisions about where are you going to fund certain things in this budget. And for me, like Mr. Hodge says, it's about infrastructure. Make no mistake about it. That's the theme of this budget. How do we fund infrastructure in this county going forward without raising the tax rates exponentially?
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, one final comment. I think I can solve your dilemma. If you need more time, it's simple. We did this last year with the SRP issue. We funded a portion. We weren't sure where we'd end up on that. In fact, this evening on our consent agenda, we had actually, that we thought it was going to be a certain amount back then, and it's actually not a certain amount back then. If you read the consent agenda, we had an item in there where we needed to fund, we thought it was going to be, I think, 285 to fund SRP. Mr. Moore made the motion last year with the appropriation. We held back a certain amount of appropriation based on the SRP issues we had last year. And tonight on the consent agenda, which was number 7F, we, additional 15,000 with the school operating fund, we only need 265 for the SRP to fund it. So I think the board has a very simple option here. If other board members feel they need additional time, there's plenty of time. You can pass the school operating fund this evening, minus the 402,163, immediately turn it around and have a meeting as soon as we can and discuss the rest of it.
So let me, without making a motion, because I know the motion's on the floor, what if we voted tonight to fund the schools at 21,67,799? Is that the correct amount? At this time, and then we ask the school board and the superintendent to analyze the effect of that reduction of 402,163, so that we might reconsider it or some part thereof in the future. Could we live with such a motion so that we fulfill the letter of the law?
I was, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I was with you until fulfill the letter of the law.
That we give them the money by the date that the code says it would be?
Oh, I got you. I got you.
Mr. Tucker, I think I understand your motion. It's to fund this evening, just a motion, if you put it in the form of motion, and Tom can correct me if I, I think this is right, a motion on the floor with regards to just to fund and appropriate, or fund, I guess, fund and appropriate, if I'm correct, right?
Budget and appropriate.
Fund and appropriate, right. Fund and appropriate-
Budget and appropriate.
The budget, budget and appropriate, excuse me, the amount to the schools, that's in the county administrator's proposed budget, for the moment, minus the 402,163, to allow them to look at the impact. Is that your motion, Mr. Tucker? I think that might be it.
I'm thinking, figure, tell me if I'm wrong.
I just want to point out that you have to adopt their entire budget, not just the budget. I'm not talking about dollar amounts. I'm just saying, you adopt all of their revenue sources, not just the transfer from this county. And you were talking about 21,469 or 21,67,000, which is just the transfer from the county. You must take action on the total school operating budget, and then action on the total school food service fund.
What would the total of that, what would the total be?
The total operating, the total school operating budget in the resolution is 44,203,072, and the change that was proposed by Mr. Hodge is 43,809,09. That's the school operating fund. And then the school food service fund is 1,299,182. So you, you're not, you're not, you are required to budget and appropriate their entire budget, not just the transfer from the county.
So, but the motion in its form still holds, just the number plug-in is different?
Correct. Yes, correct, sir.
So the motion that I would make if we got to that point would be to fund the school, fund and appropriate to the schools, the 42-
43,809,09. I think that's what you're saying. And 1,299,182.
The school service fund. Well, the motion I would make would be that we vote on the entire school budget minus the $402,000 for the time being. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, we can do that.
With the idea that we insert the word "at this time" and ask the superintendent and the school board to tell us what the effect of that $402,000 is, I mean, they have worked hard with us, as you have remarked, this year, to come up with a budget and cut their own budget. I'd like to hear from them what they say is going to be the effect of a reduction of 402.
And they also created a capital maintenance reserve fund this year, which was the first time they've ever done that. Fellow board members, I will withdraw the motion I presented, and allow if there's another motion that needs to be presented, present it.
Does the secondor have to withdraw the motion?
I withdrew it.
There's a, a motion to amend the motion.
Right. If he withdraws his motion, I think Mr. Tucker was the second on it. They withdraw that, then we're back to this one, and we'd need Mr. Hodge and Mr. Williams to also withdraw theirs, because this is not really an amendment of that motion.
So you're two withdrawals?
Yeah, just withdraw, and then Mr. Tucker's motion becomes the main motion.
The maker of the motion, Mr. Melton, has withdrawn his amendment to the original motion. Does the secondor-
Yes.
Okay, so there is no longer an amendment to the motion. Now on the floor is a motion by Mr. Hodge and a second by Mr. Williams.
With all those numbers that Mr. Hodge referenced.
Yes.
So you're asking, Tom, did that one still needs to be withdrawn?
That needs withdrawn as well, because Mr. Tucker's motion is so different that I can't view it as an amendment.
I agree.
It's too different to be viewed as an amendment of your motion.
Okay, because I was going to say before, it was just an amended, right, and a second.
Mr. Melton amended your motion, because he did some math on your math. This is in fact going from adoption of the entire budget to only a portion of the budget.
Fair enough. Okay, fair enough, Tom. Thank you. Yes, I would move to- Yes, I would, I would move to withdraw that. Withdraw my motion.
Mr. Hodge, I just want to record this.
That's fine.
Mr. Hodge withdrew his motion, and Mr. Williams withdrew his second.
Now the floor is clear.
So there's currently no motion on the, no motions on the floor.
There are no motions on the floor.
Correct. I thought Mr. Tucker's was still on the floor. It doesn't?
No. We just cleared.
It hasn't been seconds.
I'm sorry.
So, let me see if I've got the word right. I move that we fund and appropriate the, to the school's budget. 43,80909. Is that the right figure, Pat?
Yes.
And, yes, and 1,299,182.
Which is the food fund?
Yes.
Okay, for both of those.
43 million.
And that we ask the school board and the superintendent?
It was million, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but you said 43,000, 43 million.
Yeah, 43,800,909, and 1,299,182.
For the food service?
Yes.
And that we ask the school board and the superintendent to analyze the effect of a reduc, of this reduction of 402,163 within the next blank number of days? What is, was it need to be, Pat?
I think they can do it very quickly. They already know, they already know where it's coming from. I mean, within their budget.
The superintendent is out of town this week.
Here's what I'd like. I think we need to give not only the superintendent and the school board the opportunity, I think we need to make sure the public understands what's going on, so let's give them some chance to digest what we're saying. Let's just hear it on, let's have our next budget discussion on June 1st. And our next, you know, we won't, we might off the workshops we've already got planned that are quite full, as Mr. Williams said, we just handle it on June 1st.
So insert that date in my motion, please.
Okay.
Is there a second? Okay, starting over again.
What's number are you proposing right now? Did you grab a motion?
Plus the 1.7 food service.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any questions or comments? I have come, and I cannot support the motion as presented. I came prepared tonight to support the budget tax rate of 90 cents and the budget that was presented that we started in March working on. Mr. Williams is right, we've gone through a ton of data. However, we've had this data in front of us since March. I was prepared to support it. I'm still prepared to support it. So therefore, I may not support the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Some comments. I'm kind of of the same mood that you just described, but I seconded the motion because it gives us time to do what I think we should have done in the first place. Now, I'll make myself clear. I don't think there's anybody in this room that supports low taxes more than I do. I spent a year and a half of my life as the executive director of the Richmond Tea Party. Tea stands for taxed enough already, as a reminder. I did that for a year and a half for free. I earned no money whatsoever from them, no salary, no perks, because I fear for the nation's financial future, and it does extend down through the state and local level. So I just want to get that on record. I am not a person that likes to raise or even maintain taxes where I see that it can be lowered. That puts me in an awkward position, to say the least. Philosophically, I agree with lowering taxes, but I just want to say openly that I feel ambushed tonight. I ran on low taxes, so I was naturally bent to go along with an 89 cent rate and cut some things here or there that I think we probably could. But I don't like the way it happened. Basically, as we've been discussing, I think the school board has more than come halfway, and that was one of my goals when I got elected, was to bridge that gap between the board of supervisors and the school board. And I really think we came close tonight to betraying that trust, but now I think we might have recovered from that. As far as cutting from senior citizens and the free clinic and those kind of things, I want to specifically mention, again, we had budget workshop, I was elected February 10th. I swore in on February 12th. I've been in this job less than three months. But here's how it breaks out as far as concentrating on the budget. We had a workshop March 9th, March 16th, March 23rd, a joint budget workshop with the school board, March 24th, March 30th, April 1st, another one joint with the school board. We've had regular meetings where budget or CIP issues have come up, including April 20th. We had another joint budget workshop with the school board, April 22nd. In other words, my whole life as a county supervisor has been concentrating almost solely on the budget. And it really would have been nice if I had received a phone call, or an email, or an in-person communication that we were going to cut taxes, and it's going to affect the following light items, boom, boom, boom. I didn't find this out until pretty much supper time before I came here. I'm going to kick you out. I'm also the vice chairman of the Republican Party in Palatine County, and Mr. Williams, Mr. Hodge proposed this. They run as Republicans, and I didn't know anything about this. I would ask in the future that when there are major, major issues that are going to come up, I know we can't meet three as quorum, but I think better communication is called for. I think it would be fair, not only to the school board, but to our staff, our county attorney, and also the public, like Mr. Melton mentioned. Kind of like Mr. Tucker, I got some emotion running here, and I'm thankful for Robert's rules right now. But I'm going to mention one other thing here. Senior citizens are dear to me. My wife worked in a retirement home for four years. We have a lot of friends, and now past friends, that are of considerable age, and my heart goes out to them. I've done ministry to them. I have donated out of my own pocket to the free clinic. These are things that, to me, are not just lines on a piece of paper. These are people, and it's very important to me that we take care of those people. And I think we do an injustice if, at the last second, we are to decide whether to cut $31,000 from senior citizens or cut money from the free clinic. I don't want to have to process that here in 20 minutes or less. So I'm glad we have the extra time. In the spirit of keeping everybody informed, I'm going to switch just a little bit here. You know, I've been an advocate for two more deputy sheriffs in this county, and I know Sheriff Neal is sitting back there. He and I have had talks, I've had talks with Ms. Wyler, my colleagues, to cut the budget and not address the fact that we have two deputy sheriffs that we're somehow trying to find. To me, that's one of the most important issues we have, and that never even came up. So I'll tell you my plan looking forward, and this is transparency. I'm notifying everybody all at one time. I think we can find money in unexpected revenue from businesses that have opened up here in Palatine County in this next year, revenue that we have not yet put down on paper. And June 1st, I'm going to propose an amendment to the budget, which we can do, or soon thereafter, to ask to fund two deputy sheriffs. And I'm frankly surprised that didn't come up in this discussion. So again, I want to voice my support for teachers and the school board, senior citizens, social services, free clinic, deputy sheriffs. I would have liked to have had more time to consider the impact of these cuts. So in future, I would ask my colleagues to give me a phone call, leave a message on the answer machine, I'm in the book, send me an email, or knock on my door. And I think that would go a long way toward avoiding this kind of meeting that we just had tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to respond to some of Mr. Norvig's comments, because obviously he has a memory problem. He met with me two weeks ago in my kitchen with a witness, where we went through every one of these cuts, and you were in agreement with him, Mr. Norvig. You left my house, then you went and met with Mr. Hodge, and again, with another person, the same person that was in the kitchen with you and I, witnessed your agreement again to every one of these cuts. Not one of them is me, and I can produce the notes from that meeting. If I need to, I can produce a witness. So it's somewhat disingenuous to say you didn't know and you weren't informed. You were informed. In fact, when you left to go to Florida, you were in agreement with every one of these cuts. The only thing that changed was that we decided to take some of the cuts and put them to a tax break for the citizens, citizens in this county. That's the truth. So to say that you were left out, you were probably the most informed person up here on stage.
Mr. Williams, let's, let's not personally attack each other. I think he addressed a group. He didn't attack you personally, so let's be careful. Just, you can continue, but I, I understand, I understand.
I feel, I feel personally affrontery when somebody accuses me of doing something when it's not true.
Yep.
That's my point.
But David, I didn't know anything about it.
Carson, I didn't, let me finish.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
I've got the floor.
You've got the floor.
I don't always get phone calls that work the other way either. I, it's a lot of times I come to these meetings that I'm not informed about things that you and Bill have discussed. That's the way it works. I don't take a personal offense to that. That's the way it is. We don't always call every time to every board member and share with them what we're going to do or not do. That's not realistic. It doesn't happen. You come prepared to meetings to deal with the issue at hand and express your view as one of the five elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. What's most perplexing to me about it all, most disturbing to me, is you, this, this information came at the 11th hour, but yet you just referenced you knew it two weeks ago. If you had had courtesy enough to extend that courtesy to your fellow board members two weeks ago, we may have had some good discussion about it, and I may have been in support of it or not in support of it. I never had the chance until I got here tonight. So that is the thing that alarms me. Whether Mr. Norvig knew about it or didn't know about it, doesn't bother me that much. And I do agree, but we have been attacked at times that you weren't involved in conversation. But what, what's now taking place is you've acknowledged the fact that, that you're going to do your things on the side and bring your things forward. I guess that's your prerogative. For you to know two weeks ago and not extend the courtesy to Mr. Tucker or myself or, or Mr. Norvig, if he was or he wasn't, that, that's what bothers me the most. Thank you.
Well, let me share something else. I will say again, this has been an evolving process. I couldn't say with certitude what I was or wasn't going to do right up until the time I come to a public meeting, because you never know what you're going to hear at the public meeting. That's why you hold public meetings, to hear from people. And we've held public meetings where people, if they wanted to come forward and they want to express support for what was in the budget, they can. If you have something that you were working on with Carson, so what? Good stuff. I mean, that's what you do. Barry has been, you know, all week down in Norfolk, working on a federal case, a federal trial. He hasn't been around. Larry has been a advocate. But again, there's no crime with everybody doing their own due diligence, working forward their own versions of the budget. It happens all the time. And again, I'll reference Justice Field. It happened with our budget. That's what you do. Everybody develops their budget proposal that they think is the best one for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I, one question I'll just leave you with. We could debate this all night. You said that people have the chance to speak at the meeting. Well, I'm just curious, how many people of the 28,000 citizens knew of your new plan that you were going to propose tonight and give them the ability to come speak? They thought that the adopted plan was the one we did on the 20th, so therefore, they had a certain trust and respect that that was the plan. So I, I guess, how many other 28,000 citizens had the opportunity to understand you want to cut funding from the schools, not to fill the gap, to cut, cut three positions, to not fund any raises for the county people, to take their money away from the senior connections, YMCA, blah, 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 blah? Those people didn't know, so how could they come speak?
They could come and speak in support of it, because again, anybody that's been to a budget hearing, they knows, they know that what's proposed, just like, you know, the general sense, is not always what gets adopted, is it?
No, I will agree with you there.
Now, going back to this thing about cutting money from senior connections, things like, we made a decision some years ago that we weren't going to do charitable contributions. So it's not like that we have this funding stream going to these, you know, nonprofits today.
Let me say, let me correct that. You and Mr. Hodge and Mr. Moore made that decision. Mr. Tucker and I voted to fund those. Thank you.
The board as a majority made a decision.
Thank you.
Now, this doesn't mean that we're cutting funding. We're, this is new money going to charitable donations. And let me finish. I've said a thousand times, taxpayers, homeowners, families make the best decision when it comes to making charitable contributions and what they want to do with their tax dollars. Not me. Don't ask me to divine what charity, that's my favorite charity that I want to fund, versus somebody else's charity. That doesn't work. Again, there's two things that this county is known for, is volunteers and charity. If you look what our churches do, if you look what our volunteers do, it's unparalleled. And you compare us to other jurisdictions. So I'm not comfortable, I've never been comfortable, and don't ask me, as a supervisor or elected official, to take your tax dollars and determine what charity that I think should be funded or what charity doesn't get funded. That's a slippery slope.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Last thing, then we need to look at our strategic plan, because this board voted 5-0, asked Mr. Norvig to reinstate funding to the seniors as party rights, vision statement, and strategic plan. You voted for it, Mr. Hodge voted for it, I voted for it, Mr. Tucker voted for it, and Mr. Moore voted for it. The only one who did not have the ability to vote was Mr. Norvig. So maybe we need to look at our strategic plan and, and decide how we want to vote on that or amend that and put the vote on record. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one sentence. I had no idea this proposal was coming tonight, this, this resolution. None.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. I don't want to cut anyone off. Mr. Hodge, do you have anything else you want to add?
Call the question.
Mr. Tucker?
All in favor of Mr. Tucker's motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion passes 4-1. So now, I guess?
Yes, we're back to, if I'm right, Tom, Mr. Chairman?
You need to take off the table, the previously placed on the table issue. Need a motion and a second. It's not debatable, so.
I make the motion that we, I think we're right, if I'm right, Mr. Chairman, I think we're back on, back on 11A. Is that right?
Right.
I make the motion to return my motion off the table to reduce the tax rate to 89 cents.
Second.
Now you just need a vote.
So, so the motion is to remove the motion for the advertisement to?
No, the motion is just to go back to?
Is to remove the table.
Right, to remove the table. So remember, we started this whole thing with a motion?
I understand with the 89 cent proposed rate that he was?
Right. When you take it off the table, that's what's pending again, is the 89 cent motion.
Okay.
So, and right now, you just need a vote to take it off the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Now you have a motion that has been made by Mr. Hodge and seconded by Mr. Williams for an 89 cent tax rate.
No, 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 no.
Yes, you, all you did was vote to untable that motion. So now on the floor is 11A, which is a motion by Mr. Hodge and a second by Mr. Williams for an 89 cent tax rate. That's what you have right now that you're discussing.
So any discussion on the motion? Are we going to vote, or are we going to have discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
I'm done discussing it. So I gave my reasons.
Okay.
On record.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me make sure I understand what the motion is.
The motion is to adopt an 89 cent tax rate.
All right, good enough.
And you are allowed to make other motions. I mean, that's, taking it off the table doesn't lock you that that's the only motion out there. You, other motions can be made, just FYI. I don't want to give the false impression that this is like the only option now, because I don't want to give the false impression that this is like the only option now because all we are is reset to where we were 35, 45 minutes ago, whenever that was.
Yeah, I am not, comments on the motion, I am not in support of the 89 cent tax rate. I came fully prepared to support the 90 cents tax rate that was advertised to the majority of the citizens of this county through the paper, so therefore I am not in support of the 89 cent tax rate. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion to adopt the 89 cents tax rate?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions?
It was two to three.
It was a nay.
It's a nay?
Yeah.
Okay. The motion doesn't pass 3-2. I'm going to make an amended motion on a motion that we adopt tax rate at 90 cents as proposed. Do I get a second?
Was that an amended, you have a new motion?
It's a new motion. The previous motion is gone now.
The motion has been voted on, yes.
Yeah, the motion has been voted on. It's a new motion.
Or maybe we should have some discussion about, since we don't have adopted until the 30th.
Why would we adopt a 90 at this point if we just said we wanted the schools to do an analysis on a reduction of 402?
A motion to defer to June...
I make, that was behind my decision to vote nay against 89 was I was kind of assuming we were going to defer.
I made a motion for the 90 cents. Do I have a second? Seeing none, the motion doesn't move forward. There's another motion, then make it.
May I move to defer the decision on the real estate tax rate until...
June 1st.
June the 1st.
Second. Discussion or comments?
I'll just go back to what I've said earlier. If you look back, what we've done, going back to our budgets, each of the last two years, we've done 2% increases for county employees and for the people in the school system. When we did the first 2%, that was the first pay raise in the county in five years. Pretty remarkable because we did it off the heels of a $10 million poll that we had to fill in the budget. I would like to see, at this point, as opposed to continuing to spend money to do a third salary enhancement, either through the salary study, which I feel like should be deferred, or through the drawing down of the state money for the 1.5% salary increase. I think the taxpayers in this county, they deserve something finally. And if we can't find $290,000 in this budget of 70 something million to reward them, to do for them what we've done for county employees and school employees each of the last two years, that just seems like the right thing to do to me. Right thing to do for me at this particular time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Motion's on the floor to defer the tax rate. Vote until our June 1st meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2.
The next item on your agenda is 11C. It has to do with Personal Property Tax Relief Act. You have already adopted a personal property tax, so you can adopt the personal property tax relief percentage if you choose to do so tonight. It's found on page 259 of your agenda. And the relief is the same as it was last year at 45% tax relief. I stand ready to answer any questions on that item.
Any questions of staff? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve R. 2015-40.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
On your next item, staff is asking that you defer action on adopting a staffing plan because you need to have a budget in order to do that. So we're asking that you take a motion to defer action on Resolution R. 2015-41.
Any questions? I'll make a motion. We defer Act R. 2015-41, adopting a FY16 staffing plan, to our June 1st meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is Resolution R. 2015-31, establishing the authority of the Powhatan County Administrator. Found on page 268 of your agenda. It is what we discussed last month in our workshop.
Mr. Chairman, this was, this came out of a work session that we had where I was explaining, where we discussed the authority of the board and the county administrator and the fact that it's a good, best practice to delineate, to express authority of the county administrator. What it does is it lets the public know what tasks have been delegated to county administrator. So what I drafted for you is a resolution that just literally lifts the language from the county administrator's contract, which is not out there for the public and also from state law. And what it will do is it just creates a formal, official delegation of authority that people can recognize and go to if they have a question as to the authority of the county administrator on a particular issue.
Any questions of Mr. Lashney at this time? Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve R. 2015-31.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item F, Resolution 2015-44, amending FY15 Powhatan County operating budget by budgeting and appropriating $16,470 from the capital maintenance reserve for voting machines. This is an additional item. Pat has let us know that they needed a couple backups in the voter registrar's office. Ms. Waller, you have anything to add?
Yes, first of all, there is an error in the agenda, not on the agenda resolution, but if you look on page 278, staff is recommending that we purchase these voting machines from the FY2015 contingency, not from capital maintenance reserve. And so it is stated correctly in the bottom half of the agenda, so when you make your motion, we'd like you to make that motion that it's coming from the contingency, not the capital maintenance reserve. And this was an item that was brought forward on April 24th from the voter registrar that when she came forward to you on April 20th and asked for 13 voting machines and seven OVO digital scanners, she did not include the backup machines that are required, and she does need to have three OVO optical scanners as backup machines, and the price of that is $16,470. And again, it would be a motion to have this funded from the contingency fund of the FY15 budget.
This is going to be the last time, right?
Any questions of staff?
Move to approve R. 2015-44 from the contingency fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next thing we have is a discussion item is A, Ordinance 2015-0, amending Powhatan County ordinance to amend Chapter 74. Mr. Altman, are you taking this?
No, this is mine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Yeah, this is mine. This comes out of a, we have an ordinance that was put in place quite some time ago that we assess a penalty or can assess a penalty for people that if the sheriff's office or EMS has to respond to a DUI or driving without, on a suspended or driving without a license, that we can assess the costs of that, which is a flat fee of $350 or actual time. What, the way our ordinance was written, it was a little bit of ambiguity because it said it could be done as court costs or could be done as a civil penalty. In conversations with the newly-elected Commonwealth attorney, we agreed that the most practical approach is to eliminate the civil penalty and make it court costs every time is just to, when they're in court with these folks on the DUIs and the driving on suspended, just to add this $350 fee as a court cost, and that was the new Commonwealth attorney's suggestion. So that's, that's all this is, is to make it clear that it will always be assessed as a court cost.
Thank you. Mr. DeHart, I know we discussed this a little bit. Do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. As was stated, this actually was started in 2001, and over the years, the code has actually changed. Various times the board has adopted all the new changes. And the most recent change, it was addressed that we could do this at the time of sentencing as opposed to a separate civil action. We have chose to go with the, at time of sentencing, the judges on board, general district judges on board that, as well as the Commonwealth attorney's office. However, we still have a few names, and this just started April 1st. Those that have been charged, April 1st on will be done under the new system at sentencing. We still have about 40 names, 50 names, that have not gone to court yet that were charged prior to April 1st. So that, those particular names will still be done under the civil proceedings until they've exhausted. And right now, I'm looking at court dates somewhere in the neighborhood of end of July and August before they actually come to court. And, you know, whatever the board's action, how they want to proceed with that as far as any type of civil penalty, but we can only go back three years from the civil penalty to take any of these to court. So right now, it's just been a voluntary payment.
Questions of the...
So this is really just a process of streamlining and making it easier for everybody concerned rather than...
It actually eliminates about two or three steps. From us having to track the cases now, just the officer themselves when they go to court, and it's a DUI, there's actually several different offenses that can be assessed. Right now, we're just tracking the DUIs and driving suspended. And now the Commonwealth attorney, when those cases come to court that have been charged after April 1st of this year, they were automatically, at the time of sentencing, if the individual's convicted, will ask for that penalty. So it takes out the tracking step, pretty much. It takes out the treasure and having to bill on the civil action, and then it would eliminate the, any action on the county attorney's part.
Not that this is a tax per se, but Mr. Hodge's comment, I think, to tax it, you make it less. I mean, the whole purpose is to shut down DUIs, get them off the highway, to send a strong message, and that's what we really are after.
That was the intent. If you don't drink and drive, you don't drop suspended, you don't have to worry about the penalty.
Thank you, Mr. DeHart.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
No, it's just discussion.
It's a discussion. We will vote on this.
We will have a public hearing on June 1st and with asking you to take action.
I apologize, it is a discussion item.
Please, discussion.
We need a discussion on Strategic Action Monthly Plan Update. Pat, I know you've got a brief update on...
This is found on page 291. The last update was given to you on April 6th. You had asked for monthly updates. I have highlighted in yellow any changes from the April 6th update. So on LD1, Complete the Zoning and Subdivision Ordinance Updates, we've held a public hearing and we've recommended to the board for adoption. Staff's items are complete on that. On item HS1, Structure the New Fire and EMS Emergency Management Department, we brought board to you the revised Powhatan code, so staff's action on that is complete. Those are the only two changes from the April 6th update. I stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Waller at this time? At this time, we have our second public comment period. Please limit your comments to two minutes if you're an individual, three minutes if you're a group. Please state your name. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. At this time, we have county administrator comments?
Board, we need to schedule additional workshops with you. We will be sending out another email for additional dates. We've been asked to trim down the agendas for both the 18th and the 20th workshops, is my understanding. So we'll be sending out several dates and asking to schedule that. And if you wish we could have workshops on a Saturday, if you wish, or we can also start earlier than 6 o'clock because I know the board gets very tired after 8 o'clock at night. So we're, staff is willing to start as early in the day as you want, and we're also willing to work on Saturdays. So just let us know what works best so that we can work through some of these items that are on the outstanding list.
To the fellow board members, I will meet Ms. Waller tomorrow, and we'll go through both, both of the meetings, and we will come up with a proposed agenda, some dates, so we can, we can get the work accomplished in a timely fashion, but yet not burden staff and us with some long, long meetings. Pat, do you have anyone else that you want to introduce?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to introduce our new IT Director, Randy Buzzard, who is here tonight to meet the board. So welcome.
Welcome.
Good to have you here.
It's not necessary you say anything.
In other words, please don't.
Welcome to Powhatan. Look forward to it. You've got big, you've got a lot of work to do. Any, we'll go to board comments at this time. Any board comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to recognize a couple of organizations which are really trying to help out with the tax burden. The social services staff held a child abuse awareness picnic about three weeks ago on one of the coldest Saturdays we've had. They made $606, which went into the social services contingency fund. They expected a lot more. In addition, the rescue squad has donated money into social services. And most importantly and most impressive to me, the women's club has donated in the last 60 days, $6,500 to social services. And this is exactly the kind of activism and volunteerism that David talks about. The people come forward in this community and they see a problem that we can't totally fix with the taxpayer's money. Everybody understands that, but rather than bemoan it, they jump in and do something about it and collect money and donate it with no strings attached. So it's fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.?
I have a couple of quick comments. One is, I wanted to point out an example, I think, that helps perhaps define the discussion to some degree this evening. That is, you know, we went through a process with the school board, and a good one, through lots of meetings. And the entire board up here, from what I understand, talking with my fellow colleagues, we were always under the impression from the get-go that our portion of what we needed to fund the schools for the 1.5% raise was $473,602. Not until the second to last meeting, if I'm correct, did we all realize that wasn't right. We actually found out that it wasn't 473,602, which is a pretty big number in and of itself, but it was what I mentioned this evening in my line items, and explained clearly, 287,000. So the point is here, in the process that we have in this country, you may all think sitting in the audience that somehow, that we are given some crystal ball and that the information we are given all of a sudden just says, well, this is it. There's a prime example directly affecting the schools that I was under the impression for the longest time was the 473 number, until we met several times with the school board, which was a good thing, and we find out it was a whole lot less. Now, how does that happen? You might sit there and scratch your head, well, don't you all talk to each other up there? We talk to each other to the degree that we can based on our professions and where we're at in life? Yes. Don't you get the right information all the time the first time? No. So I want to leave this note, and that is, to draw a conclusion that somebody instantaneously has all the information at once and it's all correct information is wrong. As a policymaker, what you really should do, you actually wait until the final minute of the vote, because here's why. Just like another example with the War Memorial Building, people thought they had it all figured out, who was going to vote how? No. You wait because the information that comes to you and the decision-making process that you should go through, as Mr. Tucker's pointed out numerous times, and I agree, you proceed with all deliberate speed. You don't focus on speed, you focus on deliberate. And that means assimilating that information and making that final decision when that vote finally comes. And I think that's the right way to govern. It's not the wrong way to govern. That's how you should govern. Because if you make decisions, if this board had made a decision before our school board meetings, we would have thought it was 473,602. We'd have probably voted on that without having, what? A fair, frank, full, honest discussion? And that's what we had up here this evening, which is what our system is supposed to do. Sure, it can look a little bit, I'm not sure where we're going at the moment, but that's good. good. In other countries, you know where they're headed, and you don't want to go there. So I think it's a good discussion this evening that we had, but I just want to let people know that, because you don't know that. You can't know that unless you've been on the board. You can't. There's no way you would know that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Just a couple comments. I, I fully agree with everything you say, however, I was not confused. I, I went to Mr. Johns and trusted what he told me. Was it 287 was the number? 287 was the number. The 473, I think, came from some people within the state to you guys, being Mr. Williams and Mr. Hodge, then it came to us. So I wasn't as confused or as, as anyone. I felt that the school board, Dr. John, Mr. Johns had told us the right amount. However, the subsequent meeting that was taking place did clarify that, and I don't think that was bad. So I don't think the schools ever had the 473,682 in their budget, so that's all I have to say. Go ahead, Mr. Williams, you can finish.
I'm not sure where I'm gonna finish.
Well, you look like you wanted to say something.
Going back to that night where, it was funny, I was sitting here, I remember Valerie was on one side, and Rick Cole was on the other, and I'm looking across right where Larry's at, and Carson was sitting there. And it was that moment when we found that, it wasn't just David Williams got an F that night. Carson Tucker, you know, he had to go to the corner with the dunce cap, you know, very hard, you know, you had to go sit in the corner. But what was interesting was, school board members, they didn't know either, because remember, they took a stab at the interpretation of the policy, or the, of the, excuse me, of the legislation, and they didn't know. So it was, Bill, you, you were probably the only one that passed that night. I'm not, I'm not sure if there was others, but...
Social promotion.
Huh?
It's social promotion.
Social promotion. Well, he still passed, I'm giving credit. He at least knew. I did not know the right number, and from your reaction, Carson, you didn't know, you were surprised, and from school board members alike, you know, they were surprised. So it happens.
Well, if I recollect, we didn't give Mr. Johns a chance to answer that night, but that's okay.
Thanks, Larry.
Any other comments? If not, Mr. Tucker, will you lead us in closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but the bylaws, the board bylaws require that all closed session items need to be disclosed five days beforehand. The second item on here, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose, was not disclosed. If all five of you vote to accept this motion, you will have accepted, because the vote, our bylaws also say if four of you vote, you can discuss something that wasn't provided within five days. But I wanted to bring it to your attention that the middle item, the discussion of the acquisition of real property...
So do we have a real property conversation tonight?
Yeah, we do have a real property conversation.
So you need four votes at least.
So you'll need four votes at least.
Do you have a motion? Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss in closed session the following matters. One, consultation of legal counsel employed or retained by the board regarding specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Two, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Three, two matters concerning the appointment and performance of specific appointees of the board, whereas pursuant to 2.2, 3711A1, A3, and A7 of the Code of Virginia, and such discussions may occur in a closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Let's go.
Only things discussed will you see.
I think, I think I can do this. We'll see. If I don't think about it, I can do it.
Madam Clerk, will you, or Mr. Lashney?
All right, you ready? Were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such matters as were disclosed in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or heard or discussed in the closed meeting?
Mr. Williams.
I'm still impressed with him in close, his eyes are open over that.
It's going good, Tom.
Aye.
Mr. Norvig.